Calling the Hingham Board of Selectmen meeting dated October 27, 2016 to order. It records what I say, it does not amplify it. Oh, alright. Can you hear me now? Okay, alright. Okay. Let's see, approval of the minutes. Lady, gentlemen, have we had an opportunity to review the minutes?
I think there was just a couple of cents in the one.
Yep, I think they're in there.
That's fine.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 13, 2016 as amended. All in favor? Aye. Questions from the public regarding items not on the agenda? Okay, let's get right to it. Ladies and gentlemen, we have the Department of Public Works in for some votes on a couple of contract renewals, so rather than keep Mr. Fernandez here until the end of what could be a long meeting, I'm gonna take him now, so just bear with us if you would. And, Mr. Alexiades, can you take us through what's before us?
Sure, we have a number of contract extensions with five companies that do work with the Department of Public Works. These are all contract extensions that were part of the original bid process but need to be approved second thoroughly by the Board of Selectmen. Roger will take you through them specifically.
So, five different contracts that consist of highway safety systems. This is a group that does the painting of our roads, road striping. Aggregate Industries, this is the group that does the actual pavement installation. Mass Pavement and Reclamation, this is a bid that we use to undertake construction services, reclamation, excavators, work of that nature. Seal Coating Inc., another surface treatment that we typically place on roadways. And MCI Contracting, that's an annual contract that we let out for general building maintenance and smaller projects as they may come up to do on various projects throughout the town. The estimated values of these contracts annually respectively, Highway Safety Systems, forty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety. Aggregate Industries, seven-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-five. Mass Pavement and Reclamation, four-hundred-and-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty. Seal Coating Inc., five-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight. MCI Contracting, ninety-nine thousand. And with that, I'll turn it over to the board.
Are these contracts being renewed with people who are, well, it's kind of an obvious question, these are people we're doing business with already and we have done so for some time, is that right?
That's correct. So, within each contract, we have the option to extend up to three years. That's allowed by statute. That discretion is up to the Town of Hingham based on performance and satisfactory deliverance of product. We don't see any advantage in rebidding these from a cost standpoint. As a matter of fact, with respect to the paving, we saw an actual reduction in our paving costs. That's a direct relation to the escalation clause built into that contract. When petroleum prices go up, we tend to pay more, and when they go down, we pay less. In this particular case, we realized just this last construction season, a hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollar savings in our roadwork, so. But yes, to answer your question, these are all extensions of those existing contracts.
Okay, and by virtue of your presence here, you're satisfied with the work?
That is correct, yep.
Alright. Any of my colleagues have any questions?
Just, I guess, that was one of my questions, so that, these aren't, none of these are bids, these are extensions?
Correct, yes, yes.
And have we had any issues with any of these companies?
None whatsoever.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Is this the second or the third year?
No, I, I believe for some it's the third year, for others, it's the second year. I don't have those here, but.
Thank you.
I think it's designated by fifteen and sixteen, so the fifteen.
Oh.
Well, we did put those in, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Alexiades.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to sign a one-year contract extension with Highway Safety System, Inc. for crosswalk service treatment as outlined in bid package CWST-15. This contract is valid through December 31, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye. I'll entertain a motion to sign a one-year contract extension with Aggregate Industries for hot mix asphalt production and pavement installation, structure adjustment, controlled cold milling, cold plating as outlined in the bid package, PAV-15. This contract is valid through December 31, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to sign a one-year contract extension with Mass Pavement Reclamation, Inc. for equipment rental and labor services as outlined in bid package EQUIP-15. This contract is valid through December 31, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to sign a one-year contract extension with Seal Coating, Inc. for micro-surfacing and random crack seal coating by fiber reinforced method as outlined in bid package MICR-016. This extension is valid through December 31, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to sign a one-year contract extension with MCI Contracting, Inc. for building maintenance repairs, general labor as outlined in bid package BLDGMAIN-16. This contract is valid through December 31, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye. Thanks a lot, Mr. Fernandez.
Randy, one quick question, when the three-year extension is up, they will go back out to bid, right?
Yes, made it to where we have to.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much, Mr. Fernandez. Good night.
Take care, Randy.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, we're here to the main bit of business tonight. And as you know from many of you who are here, Monday, we discussed at some length the proposed development proposal before us at 2:30 Beale Street. We spent two hours discussing that. We also decided that we should increase the seating capacity, and I'm glad that we made that decision because the room's just about full. I think for purposes of edification, I've asked the town administrator to take us through some background on 40B generally. There's been a, an excellent presentation on the issue that has been prepared by my colleague Mary, Ted, Tom, working with real estate counsel Susan Murphy, and I think it's, it's very instructive, and I think it'll give us a good understanding even for those that have seen it before. There'll be some questions on that issue generally, if the public is so inclined to ask, and then we will get into the meat of the meeting, and that's to discuss the proposals that we received in response to the RFP that was put out for two Beale Street. There are a number of them, and we'll go through them, and there'll be an additional presentation there. So then we will have for you, as well as for us, the two Beale Street option, we have the 230 Beale Street option, we'll discuss it, and I have no idea where it's gonna go from there, but I see that as the format. If you wish to speak, you're welcome to do so. I would ask that you raise your hand, come forward, when recognized, identify yourself by name and address. I realize that this is a, this could be an emotionally charged issue for some, and I respect that, but I would ask civility in the comments that you choose to make. I will not entertain personal attacks on anyone. This needs to be a constructive, albeit difficult discussion, and there's no place for the personal attacks here. So, with that in mind, Mr. Alexiades, good evening, sir, would you take us through the background of the 40B?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this presentation, it will walk us through the background of 40B, and if we can go to the first slide. For some background, the immediate question, it's fine, I have this right here, thank you, Susan, about developing two Beale Street is part of a larger discussion on chapter 40B, and what we're gonna try to do with this presentation is go through a definition of the terms to provide an overview. The vocabulary in this field is heavy and sometimes complicated to get through, it's also full with anacronyms. I don't speak an acronym well, so we'll try to go through that together and identify what they are. We'll also look at identifying and evaluating options, we'll look at the potential projects that are here pending and potentials, and describe some of the timing on these issues that the board is faced with, and the community, of course, as a whole. Hingham is committed to affordable housing. We are one of just a handful of towns that have actually taken the step to create an affordable housing trust in addition to a housing authority, so the commitment to affordable housing in Hingham has been, has been pretty strong. On our definition page, which will cover a few pages here, we'll start with chapter 40B. State law enacted in 1969 to address statewide shortage of affordable housing. Requires communities to have ten percent of their residential housing stock be affordable. So, total housing units residential and ten percent of that has to be affordable. The Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, department within the Massachusetts State Government that regulates and administers chapter 40B. Area medium income, AMI, defines household income eligibility for these affordable housing projects per state guidelines, and applicant's household income must not exceed eighty percent of the AMI, the area median income. We are in the Boston, Cambridge, Quincy, Mass, New Hampshire, HUD metro region, and this is not set by us, we don't get to choose where we are. And the household sizes, as you see listed below, with the income limits, define the financial characteristics for being able to qualify for an affordable housing unit in these complexes. Subsidized housing inventory is the official list of qualifying affordable housing projects maintained by DHCD. Very important, for a project to qualify, at least twenty-five percent of its units must be affordable. Number of units included in the subsidized housing inventory depends upon the type of housing. Homeownership would mean that we would receive twenty-five percent of the units in the SHI, and rentals a hundred percent. So if we look at some of the recent projects, the Selectmen developed eighty Beale Street a number of years ago, Craftsman Village, and, you know, twenty-five percent of those units are on the index, whereas a rental 40B that was approved recently at the shipyard for Avalon Bay would represent a hundred percent of those units counting towards the index. The Housing Appeals Committee, the HAC, it's a five-member board within DHCD that adjudicates 40B disputes. Three members appointed by the Director of DHCD and two members appointed by the Governor. The Governor appoints the Director of DHCD. And when we have, well, we'll get, in a second, we're gonna get into the legal side of the equation, and we'll walk you through how the Housing Appeals Committee is the first stop in that process. Housing Production Plan, we've heard a lot about this in the last few months, it's the town's strategy for planning housing to meet affordable needs consistent with 40B, and essentially what it allows the town to do is identify areas in the town that they're gonna promote economic development of affordable housing, and it has to be specific, it can't be, we think we're gonna do this, this or that, it has to be, these are the areas, and this is what we're looking at doing, this is the type of housing, and then actually for it to qualify, besides being approved by DHCD, we actually have to build the units to realize the safe harbors, which will, which are on our next page. So there are several different safe harbors that will allow the Zoning Board of Appeals to deny or condition a 40B application. We have the ten percent safe harbor, achieving the necessary number of affordable housing units to reach DHCD requirement, refers, is referred to by DHCD as the statutory minima. And the town maintains that's reached that ten percent level. As we know, DHCD does not agree with us, and we'll get through those numbers in a little bit on a future slide. There's also a one-year safe harbor, and that occurs when a community permits an affordable housing project that exceeds two percent of its housing stock. One ninety, one-hundred-and-ninety units at Avalon's Shipyard Project permitted on 5/17/2016, created what we refer to as the Avalon Safe Harbor. That safe harbor will expire in one year on May 17, 2017. A housing production plan could also provide a safe harbor, and again, DHCD would have to approve the housing production plan, and then the town can reach a safe harbor similar to what occurred with the Avalon Project if half a percent of the housing units, of the total housing units in town are developed, a one-year safe harbor and a one percent number if, would get you a two-year safe harbor. But again, these units need to be built. So, how chapter 40B works, suffice to say, this'll be a somewhat, for the attorneys in the room, and certainly for the real estate attorneys, this'll be a slightly simplified discussion, but if less than ten percent of a community's housing is affordable, when a 40 permit, 40B permit is filed and no other safe harbor applies, then the ZBA is limited in its ability to enforce local regulations, and that is the crux of the issue that we have here. If more than ten percent of the housing is affordable, over the ten percent threshold, the ZBA may enforce all applicable zoning regulations, local regulations. Moving on, some of the types of regulations that can be bypassed, and again, it's not meant to be a comprehensive list, but we're trying to cover the broad areas. You know, in terms of the zoning laws, land use, maximum height, density, frontage, area, wetlands, the Town of Hingham's wetland protection bylaw is more stringent than the states. They can scale back to the state guidelines. Subdivision regulations, septic regulations, site plan layout, site plan review, layout, scale, appearance, parking, traffic, and general bylaws, street excavation, you can't stop a developer under a 40B from breaking into the street, even though you might have a moratorium on that street. The next two slides, the next slide takes you through some examples of what happens with a particular project. So, we start out with local regulation not enforced, the project allowed by local regulations, and what was actually built. So we look, you know, in the first project, the Avalon Project recently permitted at the shipyard, maximum height was not enforced. Regulations allow a three-story building, a five-story building's going there. Minimum frontage for areas, Damon Farms in the south end of Hingham, you know, two to three, two to three single-family homes, instead there are eight townhouses, addressing issues of frontage and area. Use regulations, Derby Brook, single-family homes are what's regulated, they have twenty town, twenty townhouse-style units. Street excavation regulations, with the Selectmen's Home Project on Craftsman Village, we had to disturb the pavement even though it was in, within a four-year moratorium. Subdivision regulations, Lincoln Hill and Adams Court, twenty-two inch wide roadway was required, and what was allowed to be built was an eighteen-foot roadway. Wetlands bylaw and regulations, and Linden Ponds, no building within fifty feet of the wetlands, and there are buildings within twenty-five feet of the wetlands. Our laws say fifty, state laws are twenty-five. And so these are examples of how the zoning board is not allowed to enforce the regulations. This chart analyzes where we are and the disagreement between DHCD and Hingham with the affordable housing count. We both agree on the position of total units, these total units are determined each decade, so as of January 1, 2010, twenty, 2010, both the town and DHCD agreed with eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-one housing units within the town. The town's position is that the subsidized housing inventory is one-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-eight, DHCD's position is seven-seventy-nine, and you can see the percentage differences, about a ten percent, nine percent difference, and the disagreement relates to Linden Ponds. The town's position is that Linden Ponds is rental housing, and therefore, under DHCD guidelines for 40B, a hundred percent of rental units count. In 2005, DHCD notified the town that it would count twenty-five percent of the units only. Hingham challenged this ruling to the Mass Supreme Judicial Court. The SJC declined the rule since while, since there was no active pending case. We've had several cases move forward, but each time it's approached the SJC, the cases got settled for one reason or another, the court would not act without it being an active case. A lot of people have asked, why can't you just go to the court and ask them to answer this question? They will not answer the question unless there's a developer being denied under this process. Litigation history of some of the recent challenges of DHCD's count of Linden Ponds. In 2012, 2013, Avalon was beginning development on Recreation Park Drive of one-hundred-and-seventy-seven units. The ZBA asserted the town had achieved the ten percent. DHCD and the Housing Appeals Committee ruled against the Town of Hingham. ZBA appealed the HAC decision to Superior Court, and then Avalon withdrew the permit when the town agreed to purchase the land, the case was dismissed. In 2014, the Village on Main, SEB, sixteen units, again, ten percent was asserted, again, DHCD and the Housing Appeals Committee ruled against the Town of Hingham. The ZBA granted the permit with conditions and reasserted the town's ten percent position. SEB appealed the permit. A new non, a new use, non-40B has been proposed for the property, and the case is pending with the Housing Appeals Committee, but a dismissal has been requested. And then we have the last case that is presently with us, 2016, Riverstone Viking Lane off of Ward Street, thirty-six units, the ZBA asserted that the town has achieved ten percent. DHCD ruled against the Town of Hingham. The ZBA appealed to the Housing Appeals Committee, and the case is pending with the Housing Appeals Committee. I do not have a hundred percent recollection of every HAC case, but I don't believe we have ever won an HAC case.
Not on the ten percent issue, no.
So. Everybody hear that? We have not won on the ten percent issue.
So on the next page, we just walk you through a little bit of the process, and we wanted to do this to show you a little bit about what we're up against. So, when we have to appeal these, we go to DHCD, and then they, then it gets referred to the Housing Appeals Committee, I believe they're in the same building, if not the same floor, Susan? And then, then we get to leave them, and we get to go out into the Superior Court, and then we go to the Appeals Court, and then, if possible, to the SJC. And again, while every case is different, this is one of the paths that we move through. So, on our next page, we're gonna get into how many units is needed to achieve what we're referring to as an uncontested ten percent. calculation would be that we take the SHI, or the subsidized housing inventory, so the number of units, and we divide them by the total number of units which are updated every year. And again, you can see the math on the other page, if you quickly do it, it'll come out to those same proportions. In order for us to achieve that uncontested ten percent, according to DHCD's numbers, we would need a hundred and five additional units through January 1 of 2020. As of January 1 of 2020, the clock will reset, they will update based on all of the production of housing units that has occurred in the last decade. And this is where we're trying to estimate what the impact will be, we don't know for certain how many housing units will be in, we do know how many housing units have come in through the end of 2015, because we have building permits for that, and of course, we'll track the data now. There were a lot more housing units built the first six years as, as the shipyard development was built out, Black Rock, Back River, and other developments, and so, right now, the last year or two, we've seen a lot less, and so what we're doing is, if we simply took the six years of data that we have and divided it by the number of years and extrapolated out, we would come up with a higher number of sixty-eight units that we would need, but if the building tapers off, as it has the last two years, last year we did fifteen residential units, the year before it was in the sixties, then we're seeing forty-seven. We see the numbers pretty close, about twenty units apart, and, and that, those additional units would need to be in place by January 1, 2020, and that would keep the town over the ten percent on a DHCD-degreed level for the next ten years through 2030. The following chart talk takes you through what we know as pending and potential 40B projects. We talked to a lot of folks who come in and see us about a variety of different things. When they appear on this page, they've, they've actually formalized some portion of their application process, not a property owner coming in saying, we're thinking of doing something like this, and we've, we've structured it in that fashion. So we've mentioned SEB on Main Street, we've mentioned Riverstone Viking Lane, Habitat for Humanity has one house, and there's one unit, and then there's a Broadco, Broadstone Bear Cove, 230 Beale Street project, two-hundred-and-twenty projects, all of those units would count on the index, two-hundred-and-twenty. Potential developers who approach the towns with concepts, and on Abington Street, there's a twenty-four unit project, on Whiting Street, there are two to three projects along that corridor. We have been in communication with folks about a fairly large-scale 40B in the industrial park, we know the Bristol property in South Hingham is also under consideration at Schofield Road and Main Street.
No, it's at the Schofield Road, we have confirmation since this was, I'm sorry.
Correct, did they actually file?
No, but we have confirm, I don't know if it's on, we have confirmation since the PowerPoint was created a few weeks ago, that they are proceeding with a small subdivision, so that one probably could come.
I've been told within the last week that they are proceeding with, instead of a hundred-unit 40B, that they were looking to do on that property, that the property owners are looking at a smaller-scale subdivision of two or three house lots. But until that happens, that land is available. The Selectmen's parcel on two Beale Street is also, of course, on here. So, we're gonna move a little bit into the Selectmen's parcel here on this next slide. Originally authorized by Town Meeting for twenty to forty single-family home development. In May, in 2016, Town Meeting authorized rental affordable assisted living facility. The town requested proposals, and in May, received four bids, three of the four bids were determined to be non-responsive, they just bid for things that were different than what was being asked for, and there were two bids for assisted living facilities, one didn't meet the bid specs, but one that did, turned out that what they were asking us for in the, in the bid, which wasn't spelled out, was they were asking us for two to three million of our town contribution, and it was very clear to us when we went through that, that there'd be absolutely no way that they would be able to achieve DHCD approval for their project prior to May 16. The, the project required five million dollars' worth of housing tax credits which are awarded by DHCD each year, and those credits are awarded in the summer. The last time they applied for it, they didn't receive them the first year, and they got them the second year. And in addition, we'd have to go back to Town Meeting to get funding to meet, meet that obligation. So, moving forward, a couple of options that the board has been looking at on Beale Street. Continue to pursue the eighty to one-hundred unit rental affordable assisted living facility. As I just previously mentioned, we have some issues with that that won't allow it to come to fruition prior to the moratorium or the safe harbor expiring. Return back to twenty to forty single-family homes, consider approximately a hundred-unit rental 40B, or do not develop. And, and, and as we think about this, some of the other issues out there are, we could continue to litigate the Linden Ponds issue as each one of these come up, or we could obtain an additional safe harbor through compliance with a housing production plan, but I need to caution folks again that, as we looked into that, it's certainly not something that could happen prior to May 17, 2017, because we would not be able to put those units into production. On the last page, last two pages here, our next two pages, we do a grid here which talks about sort of the impact in each of these areas, and it really just grids out pluses and minuses of what we should do. So as we walk through this, eighty to unit, eighty to one-hundred unit rental affordable assisted living, and I talked about some of these in my previous slide, so I'll move a little quicker. The impact on SHI would be a hundred percent, so that would be terrific. Town Meeting approval is required, but we've already received it, so no need to go back to Town Meeting. Can it be permitted before the Avalon safe harbor expires? We concluded no, in no way could it, not even close. Advantages, there was a low impact on our roads and some other town services and other types of developments of this nature. Disadvantages, of course, were required significant town contribution and little or no revenue from the sale. I think primarily, though, one of the things was, was that it would not, it would not allow the board to meet its safe harbor, one-year safe harbor issues. Second option was the twenty to forty single-family homes, again, lower impact, twenty-five percent of those units would count, so if we're looking at needing. So if we're looking at needing, you know, the 105 preliminarily and then the 47 to 68, you're going to see somewhere between five and eight if you were to develop, towards your count, if you were to develop single-family homes on the same property. Town Meeting approval has been received, but it is unlikely that, that, actually not unlikely, it is zero chance that it will be permitted before Avalon safe harbor expires. And even if it was permitted, there wouldn't be enough units to extend the moratorium. Town has successfully completed another project of this nature, Craftsman Village, a little further down the street. I mentioned fewer housing units already. The third, approximately 100-unit rental 40B. There are 100, 100% of those units would count. Town Meeting approval is required, so another step would be, would be necessary. And it is likely that we would, we would be able to permit before the safe harbor. The, the potential, of course, here, the benefit is to achieve a 10% safe harbor prior to 51617, and also revenue potential from the sale of land. Disadvantages would be a higher impact on roads and town services than other types of development. Option four, do not develop. I think you could see no impact on the subsidized housing index, obviously, no Town Meeting approval, certainly we wouldn't meet the safe harbors, obviously no impact, and we would not be able to add to any affordable housing issues. I think on the next page, we deal with some other issues that have been brought up frequently and we want to address how we're looking at those. Continue to litigate the Linden Ponds count. That has been the town's position up until this point at some, at some level. We could, the town could prevail in litigation. Disadvantages would be, of course, that litigation time and cost between 50 and 200,000 per project, depending on the size of the project and the size of the entity that we're working with. If the town does not prevail, every project that has been filed must be reviewed within the 40B guidelines. So again, the door is open. Housing production plan. It would create additional safe harbors upon meeting production goals. Production requirements cannot be met before the existing Avalon safe harbor. DHCD has not approved prior housing production plans submitted by Hingham because of the 10% dispute. So DHCD grants communities relief from Chapter 40Bs if you adhere to their regulations. We're essentially asking them to give us safe harbor on a housing production plan when we don't agree with their most basic tenant, the number of units to be counted, and they'll, they reject our plan every time until we acknowledge that. However, a housing production plan process would take us through this slide. We would complete and submit the plan to DHCD. It must contain a mix of housing. It must identify specific sites. And it must result in at least a half a percent new units produced every year. DHCD will approve, review and approve the plan at least 120 days. The new housing, new housing is produced in the town according, in accordance with the plan. And then DHCD certifies units and awards the safe harbor. So unlike when a developer comes in and proposes a 40B and moves to the project, for example, the units that Avalon at the shipyard, they're counting on our index immediately once the project was approved. With a housing production plan, we actually have to build them. So I think people can understand how clearly that could not happen between now and May 17th. So our status on the next steps, we'll start moving into this and some of the other issues. On September 21st, the town issued a request for proposal for a 40B rental project at 2 Beale Street. On, on October 21st, the bids were received by the town. Tonight, the Board of Select will vote whether to award an RFP and call a special Town Meeting relative to that. And if they call a special Town Meeting, it will be on November 17th is the day that's been determined. Chairman.
Well, thank you Ted. That was helpful. Ladies and gentlemen, does anyone have any questions with respect to the presentation that you just heard? Yes, sir.
Dwight Crowther, 12 Bradley Woods Drive. Just a couple of quick questions, just because the numbers kind of went fast. If the Alliance project at 230 Beale Street goes through, the 200 or 220, does that say that we meet our 40B needs till 2030?
Yes.
Okay.
We exceed them by, based on our statistic, if we go back to that slide.
Yep.
Sorry, Tom.
Did everybody hear the question?
Slide 12.
Okay. The, the question from the resident is this. If the 230 Beale Street project is in fact approved by the ZBA, does that meet or exceed the 10% requirement imposed by DHCD until the year 2030? And the answer to that question is yes.
And a follow-up to that is, I believe they're in the permitting process now. Is that correct? They have made an application to the ZBA?
The question is, has Alliance submitted an application to the ZBA? And I believe the answer to that is yes, there was a submission in August of 2016.
And the last question is, in the process there, I know there's a certain time period involved, can they potentially get permitted in time by May of this coming year?
The question is, based on their submission, is it possible for the applicant to be, their application to be permitted on a timely basis within the timeframe of the safe harbor that's presently in place? And the answer is yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Calves Vasilo, 5 Jurassic Road, is that okay? Two minutes.
Fire away. Okay. Yes, sir. And again, ladies and gentlemen, this is a, we're trying to keep it general before we start to neck down into the particulars, but you're certainly welcome to ask your question.
This is actually in relationship to the slides that were just presented.
Fine.
My name is Ken Balas and I'm at Fort Taylor Lane. The question is, and my understanding is that we do not have an HPP in place.
That is correct.
So my question is, it's multiple-part question. Why don't we have one in place? If we put one in place, would it get us into safe harbor? And then the follow-up is, if it got us into safe harbor, for how long would it get us into safe harbor?
The last slide has the explanation of that on it.
Okay. The question from the resident is, do we have a housing production plan in place? And the answer to that is no. And the reason for that was explained by the town administrator previously because the 10% figure is in dispute. The town has taken the legal position that we have not only met the 10%, but exceeded it by virtue of the permitting that occurred at the Erickson project, which is now known as Linden Ponds. DHCD disputes that and will not recognize our position. If we were to submit a housing production plan, we would have to concede the 10% defense as we've come to call it. So it's a bit of a paradox, we're stuck. To get the housing production plan, we would have to waive or forego the defense that we've raised for 16 years as a result of the permitting that occurred at what is now known as Linden Ponds.
And actively, just so you know, actively, right now, we're actively litigating this issue. The town has filed legal documents stating this. So we would also be filing another document stating completely the opposite.
Understood. And I, I kind of anticipated that is the response. But as you pointed out earlier, we continuously lose this argument. And, and so to me, the question would be is, how long, if, if we conceded both the, both the legal position, how long would we be in safe harbor if we, if we did this?
If we developed a housing production plan?
Yeah.
The resident asked the following question.
His mic's on, so we don't have to.
The microphone's working now, so you're okay.
I'll defer that response to real estate counsel. I don't take the view that we've lost. I don't think that the answer has been fully adjudicated, but I'll let counsel explain that in greater detail.
And thank you, Ms. Yer. That is the answer. So far, the only place the town has lost is that DHCD and the Housing Appeals Committee, which are related entities. It has never been taken up in the court system. So it's never been taken up by the Superior Court, therefore it's never got to the Appeals Court, it's never gotten to the SJC. So we've only lost at the administrative level, and so the merits of the case have never been fully vetted.
You're welcome.
With respect to your last question, and Tom, maybe you could go back to slide 18. So with, just with the housing production plan, what's also important to remember is the town has to create and submit a housing production plan to DHCD. It has to be detailed. It has to say what we'll build, where we'll build. DHCD has to accept it. And that's also important because they're going to look at the mix of housing, the type of housing, they're going to look at our demographics, they're going to say, do you have a lot of family housing? A lot of our affordable housing is skewed towards, towards seniors because of Linden Ponds taking so much. So then let's say that that plan does get approved. You then have to produce against the plan. And as you look at the bottom of the slide, if we were to permit 44 units and those, those units were part of the plan, DHCD would grant a one-year safe harbor. If we had a project that yielded 88 units, which is 1% of the stock, that would get a two-year safe harbor. And then you would just kind of continue to go through that cycle. Our sense is that the, again, if we're looking at between now and May 17th, what is the possibility that we could create, get approved, and produce against a housing production plan to achieve a safe harbor? And as, as I think you saw in the slides, the, the sense is that it would be unlikely that all those things could occur by May 17th.
Okay, but hasn't the town already gone through and submitted a housing proposing, an HPP that was denied based off of the fact that the Linden Pond issue?
Yes, that, that happened a number of years ago.
Okay. So, but I guess my point is, is that the, the plan is sort of already in process, it just never.
I think, I think you're missing the last part though, sir. We actually have to build them.
Right.
We'd have to build 44 housing units between now and May 17th.
Oh, between now and the 17th?
Bang, with nails, cameras, doors.
Okay, so it's out of, it's off the table then?
Completely off the table.
Okay, that's fine. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, Mr. Watson.
Good evening.
Good evening. Jim Watson, 291 Rockland Street. An overall observation is I think it's unfortunate that we're spending so much time trying to get the power to block something when all the 40Bs built, Rametos, Whiting Lane, Adams Court, you know, have turned out pretty well. And the ZBA has a lot of power when they issue the company's permit to make modifications, which the developer can appeal. It isn't a blank slate. And then a bit of history, the town did prevail on the McNeil property, the site next to Beale's Cove, you know, by the river. In 81, there was a multifamily project proposed. It went to the HAC. They pointed out that the town had earlier planned the site as a commercial site, and therefore it wasn't consistent with our local plans. I'm just saying, there was one occasion out of many. And the final one is just that I'm very puzzled that we keep telling ourselves that Linden Ponds with a 200-plus thousand dollar deposit requirement is affordable for people making the incomes that you show on your table. And, and, you know, just going back a bit, as you mentioned, the, the planning board itself sued the ZBA because it was such a debatable decision. DHCD said that the company's permit should not have been granted, should have been voided. Then after a lot of debate, they said, okay, we'll accept 10%, hold you harmless. And then finally, as Ted's chart shows, they said, okay, we'll go along with 25%. But that was under, I think, probably under a bit of duress. And I, and if you look at the $56 million, $5.6 million scholarship fund that Linden Ponds has, it's nowhere near enough to waive the whole deposit for a quarter of the units. And their argument now is that 27% of the residents there now are of low income, having somehow come up with the, with the deposit. That's not the same as saying a low-income person has access. Anyway, you've got a lot to deal with, but I think those points are, should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. I'm going to defer responding to that until a later part of the meeting, but I do have a response. Is there anybody else who'd like to say anything at this point in time before we move on? Okay. At this point then, I think it's appropriate for us to take a look at the responses to the RFP that we received and that we're being called upon to consider in connection with what has been commonly referred to as the Selectman's Parcel, also known as 2 Beale Street. And Mr. Alexiadis, if you could take us through that, if you would.
Okay, let's move to the second page. So we sort of lead with the punchline, Town Administrator's Recommendation Proposal of Avalon Bay Communities. We, we issued an RFP and on Monday, I met with a group of residents that I asked to sit with me to help me as Chief Procurement Officer evaluate the RFP. The RFP was structured in a way that it was not incredibly subjective so that it would be relatively easy to review. We reviewed on a number of points. I show you an overall score that we put based on the people reviewing for each of the projects. I can say that we received six projects, proposals. They were all outstanding project proposals from top-flight companies that do, do this work very well. As I was talking with a colleague in another community, they were impressed that the town received such a bevy of good proposals. That's not always the case everywhere. People want to come here and develop, and I think you all know that because you're all here. So some of the price comparisons. Summary of the Avalon proposal, the number of units proposed was 100. As we went through the, the issues of all five, you can see the bids that came through. Alliance proposed 110 units on the site. They offered us a purchase price of 7.75 million, 94,512 dollars per market rate unit, which is how these, these developments are appraised. We had an appraisal that came in more consistent with the rest of the grouping. And you can see the rest of the grouping's numbers in here, but three of the proposals came in right with 46, 46, and $50,000 per unit for different numbering quantities of units, as you can see. Avalon Bay, as I mentioned, they, they offered 100 units, 75 market, 25 affordable, as per DHCD guidelines, 48,500 per market rate unit for a total price of 3.637 million. You can get an idea of how, here on this picture, how they've set up the site with their, their layout. And I've given you some pictures of that on a couple of these subsequent slides and what it would look like from different areas. The next proposal was Campanelli, 119 units. Again, another quality firm within the region. 89 market units, 30 affordable, a market rate a little less than the others at 224, total price of 2 million. Again, they gave us a conceptual plan that is detailed on the next page of the document, and they laid out the structures in the next few pictures. Alliance Residential, as you know, they're proposing a development on 230 Beale Street. On 2 Beale Street, they proposed 110 units, 82 market, 28 affordable, a little bit higher priced than others, $94,512, total price of 7.75 million. And the second, the next page, page 25, shows how it's laid out, how they envision laying out the site. And their elevation pictures on the second page, the next page, some streetscape views of what it looks like now. Mill Creek Residential bid 120 units, 90 market, 30 affordable, 46,000 per market rate unit, total price of 4.14 million. Again, another firm that does work in the region, it's well-regarded. And you can see their layout here. Smaller on one is larger scope, and on the next page, you can see it in more detail. You get a sense of, they tried to give you an idea of what it would look like from the street, what it would look like from the street. And then we have Criterion Development Partners, CDP. They recommend, they proposed 100 units, 75 market, 25 affordable, 50,000 per market rate unit, 3.75 million. And you can see their layout. their layout. Each of them tends to cluster around the Adams Court development. The Hanover Company is the last of the firms here that we've, that will be reviewed. A bid, they, they offered 144 units, 108 market, 36 affordable, $46,667 per market rate unit for a total of $5,040,000. And they show the layout on the next couple of pages. So, the, the group consensus, I did not share my, my views with the group until I waited to hear from them. My, my view, which I had, I had done over the weekend already, came out identical to what the party in the group was. We, we would recommend that if you were to choose to move forward with Two Beale Street, that you select Avalon Bay Communities. They provided the most consistent scoring across each of the categories. They've built facilities, not only within the region, of course, but within our town. And they meet each of the characteristics that we were, what we were concerned about, mostly centered around performance and ability to get it done within the time periods.
Okay. I know that was a lot quickly. Would anybody like to see it again?
Maybe the proposed project?
Yeah, on one.
Sure. Let's do that.
If you need to see without the lights?
Chairman of the Planning Board has requested that we see the particular proposal that was reached by the group charged with reviewing the proposals.
Okay, so, I think you gotta go back a couple more, right? Tom? Right, here, here we go. All right, so Avalon Bay Communities, they, they proposed 100 units, is exactly what we'd asked for, 75 market, 25 affordable, $48,500 per market rate unit for a total of $3,367,0500. Next page shows the layout. I think you could probably see it better. That's the whole property. I think the next page, next slide would-
Nope.
No, I guess not.
Could we-
I think you gotta go back to the previous one.
Yeah. I can help you, I guess, a little bit with it. All right. Let's, let's acclimate as to where North Street is.
That's at the top.
West Street.
Yep.
Here's West Street. North coming in, right at Adams Court. And the entrance of the property, I believe, is over here. All right, I'm sorry, right here. They have a full amenity up front of the street. They have some townhomes here, and then a larger building back here, parking all around.
And can you tell the audience what, what exists behind this proposed development?
This is the rest of the property. Over here is the, sorry, the DBW facility, and over here is the Light Park facility.
And behind that is?
Bearcove Park.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I think it's worth noting on this slide that if you see the area, and you saw this on the other developments, you notice that part of the parcel does not have any development on it. And that's because that's an area called the ACEC, Area of Critical Environmental Concern. That is a state designation, and portions of Bearcove Park are also considered an ACEC. So, as you look at that 12-acre parcel, Tom, it's about 40% of the parcel is that ACEC. So, obviously, that is a place that you wouldn't want to, you know, you wouldn't want to develop, and it would, it would require going to the state. So, that's why, that's why, as you see these proposals, you see the concentration of the housing in, to this slide, in the southernmost part of the parcel.
Okay. At this point, we're going to travel a little further down the street and look at number 230 Beale Street. Because ultimately, we have to make a choice. Again, we can do nothing. We can select one of these proposals that's been submitted with respect to Beale Street. We can choose not to. We can choose to engage with Alliance with respect to the proposed development agreement. So, at this point, we're gonna, we're gonna flip back to the discussion that we had Monday night, just to reorient and speak to some of the issues. I will say that between now and Monday night, there was some further discussions through the town administrator with the developer, and there may be some additional information that may be helpful for the audience to understand.
So, I need this, then? That's what I see you can do? Just conferring with council to make sure, does she want me to look at the term sheet or the memorandum of agreement? Because they're slightly different.
Yeah, I can just, I can give a short update from the term sheet that was distributed on Monday.
Okay, please do.
The, the changes that were made in the substantive terms that were in the term sheet from Monday night is that rather than saying 200, but then really meaning 220 by coming back later, it was discussed in the way the agreement before you was drafted is, it's just 220. That's what they intend to build. However, there will be a restriction in their permit, and also under the contract, they would, could never go beyond 220 ever. They can't come back for an insubstantial change. They could never modify it, whether it's an insubstantial change next year or 10 years from now. They would be for, capped at 220 units. So, that's a specific provision that's been added into the agreement, including a provision to agree to a condition in there if they were to get a comprehensive permit to that effect. So, not the kind of, it's 200, it's really 220, none of that.
So, Susan, the, the, Monday night, we talked about this project not exceeding 220 units.
Right.
What you're saying is, the language in the development agreement is a little bit different, but the underlying concept is the same.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Thank you.
I know that there was a question, though, well, if they start at 220, can they get another 10% or get bigger? And if they start at 220, the way we worded the agreement and the way they've agreed to a condition in the permit, if it's granted, is no, it's 220, start and finish at 220. The-
Where's this, there's an underneath?
That is, in, I believe it's paragraph four or five, but let me get my copy. That is in paragraph three. I apologize, paragraph three. And it, that also will cap, concern people have, tend to have, is on three-bedroom units. That has impacts, obviously, people have concerns about schoolchildren. There's also impact based on number of bedrooms on sewer capacity and all those types of things. So, they've also agreed that they would cap the three bedrooms, so they could not, five years from now, all of a sudden turn into a, you know, half the units are three-bedrooms. So, that's another change that they agreed to make over the last few days. On the, excuse my laryngitis, on the compensation to the town, we wanted the changes on that one.
And Susan, just a question that I know it's come up in some correspondence the board's got, but maybe you could just clarify. This, this development agreement, if the board adopts it, these units would remain, this would go into perpetuity?
Yes, and the comprehensive-
Can you maybe just speak to that?
Yes. So, the comprehensive permit would provide for that as well. So, some of the provisions in here are a little bit belt and suspenders. But as long as you have a, excuse me, a 40B project on the site that doesn't comply with zoning, the affordable units would have to be maintained in perpetuity. They would not ever be able to go to 100% market rate project.
So, they would count, they would, and then the 25% would remain affordable, and that could never change?
Right. Now, can I speak to if the ACD's regulations ever change? I can't speak to that.
Sure.
But under the current regulations, where 100% of all rental projects count, they would count. The 25% affordable is the perpetuity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'll draw your attention to another significant part of this, the mitigation on page six. Working with council, and we have some tight deadlines here, so we had to actually specify mitigation. We couldn't just say X what it is. And so-
Section six, page three.
So, section six, page three, subsection A, there are three sections, one, two, and three. In section one, it's agreed that $1 million be applied towards replacement of windows at Plymouth River School. In section two, $25,000 be applied towards two specific purposes, a digital sign trailer for the police department for traffic enforcement. And in option three, $50,000 to be applied towards improvements and maintenance, including equipment, therefore, within Bearcove Park, within, within the gates, as we call them, the Bearcove Park proper. That was left in that, in that fashion because, again, I think the board would want to see the types of impacts into the park. Some rationale for why Plymouth River Schools. So, we've had two 40B proposals. This'll be the second one within a year or so. The last one provided $1 million of, of benefit to the community. The board chose to use that funds to apply it towards a large capital project within the fire department, the, the fire truck. And so, I'm recommending to you that you consider, the schools represent about 50%, a little bit more of our capital, so I think this is a little bit of an equity issue here. You know, I think you're going to want to take that money and put it someplace where it's long-term. This is a long-term asset you're switching. You know, you'll never be able to do 230 Beale Street again, so I don't think you'd want this in, you know, a salary line item or something like that.
And the, the $50,000 is a new provision that was, you know, that Alliance agreed to make since Monday night?
That, that's dedicated towards the Bearcove Park, is that correct?
Correct.
Right, so the park, the park proper, what we call between the gates, the Cheltrie Path and Bearcove Park Drive.
Okay. Okay.
Is this, is this recent document available for people to read?
We don't have copies tonight, but they can get it.
Not at this time.
No, there's, the, the copies right now are only available for the board. If the board chooses to enter into the agreement, it'll be-
We'll, we'll put it up on the webpage tomorrow.
And it'll be available.
Okay.
So, Susan, the, the term sheet, and I think that was circulated and things, but were there, you know, this, this agreement, to me, sort of seems like it's put all the required legal language-
Yes.
-around the term sheet-
Right.
-and the concepts that we talked at length about on Monday night. Have there, are there any other substantial changes that should be called to everyone's attention?
I mean, I think the two big changes, Susan will go through in more detail, is the $50,000 that we finished on the negotiation and-
Hard 220?
The hard 220. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay.
So, we can't hear you at all? I mean, I can't, can you just, so-
Sure.
Is it something you can put up on the air for everybody to hear?
Unfortunately, we cannot. So, the two things that changed from Monday, we were talking about 200 residential units with the option for them applying for a, it's called an insubstantial change, an additional 10% at some point down the road to get to 220. In this case, it's a hard 220. So, it's just 220, no further increase ever. And in addition, we modified the, the, the benefits, the mitigation, by specifying the $1 million and, and allocating an additional $50,000 to activities within Bearcove Park proper.
And, and the two other items of, you know, contribution to the town that was in the term sheet that everyone saw Monday night are still here, that is new sidewalk and parallel parking along the southerly side of Beale Street, along the Lynch Fields-
Correct.
-to increase, increase safety for users of the field. And the other one is a conservation restriction on the southerly side. And you can see it, it's the area that's not highlighted and bright, but is part of the property. That's an area that, before Hingham Mutual bought it, there had been a commitment from the prior owner to give the town a conservation restriction for unknown reasons that never came to be. People thought it was there, and then we learned a few years ago, it had never been granted to the town. So, this would be following through on a promise that had been made many years ago to put a conservation restriction on that backland.
Susan, just, just on a question that I had at, at Monday's meeting, paragraph nine.
Mm-hmm.
We're, we're binding ourselves as a board not to pursue any other projects during the pendency of this project, is that correct? Like, if there was, if there was a senior affordable housing project that came along, we wouldn't be able to pursue it until this was finished, right?
This, this has to do with the, the board's support of other projects?
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
Right.
We wouldn't be able to pursue any other projects. Well, that, we're giving up the right to, to consider other projects, whether it be a senior affordable housing or other, in this type of project.
If, if it was a, a town project as far as pursuing it?
Well, like a, like a lift project. We, if we, if we were going to join with somebody to, to support a project, let's say with senior affordable housing, we couldn't do that during the pendency of this.
Through May 16th, 2017.
Right. So, the, the, the way this is worded is that a project that could kind of leapfrog or jump ahead of them so that the town would get to 10% and then make them more, more vulnerable to denial from the zoning board. So, that's, that's-
Doesn't say that, though, right? It doesn't say it has-
Yeah, it says, would not support any other project that could move ahead of the Alliance's project during the recent safe progress, safe harbor. That's the so-called Avalon Safe Harbor, period. So, that's the third line.
I read that, but it doesn't-
Yep.
-say that it, it, it has to be a number over the, the 105. If, if someone wanted to put a senior housing project together, and it was, if it was 100, that would still not be allowed, even though it doesn't, we'd get us to the safe harbor, right?
No, I don't, I don't think that would be allowed because it wouldn't trigger the withdrawal of the safe harbor proposition because it wouldn't meet the quantities, so...
Yeah, I mean, if, if the, the purpose of this project, of this provision is a project, whether it was Two Beale Street or any other, of the Selectmen actively supporting, that could beat this, I'm just going to use kind of everyday terms, could beat this project to the finish line, have it approved, and make this project more vulnerable to denial.
Doesn't say that in the paragraph, though. I don't read it that way at all.
Okay.
I'm just, I mean, I could-
Right.
I could, just, the plain reading of it doesn't, doesn't say that. It just says we can't pursue any project. You know, that's my-
There's no project presently for us to consider.
Well, I agree with you. I'm just saying, but I, I have a hard time binding us, looking at other projects, and I think the language is awfully loose, in my opinion, and I don't read it that way. I know they created the language, but I, I don't read it that way. Certainly, it could be more specific to what you're saying. I don't see that language. I don't like, I don't like the paragraph, anyway, but I mean, I'm just trying to understand it and make sure I'm not misunderstanding the purpose of it.
Susan, maybe for the, for the purposes of audience members who weren't here on Monday night, there were, an aspect of this development agreement, and it's, you know, written in all the, the legal stuff, but, but essentially, in this document, we are asking Alliance to, there's, there are two aspects to this. We are asking Alliance to withdraw their challenge to our existing safe harbor. And so, what, what I took away from Monday was that, that in return, Alliance says, well, if we do that, we kind of lose our ability to, we, we lose our ability to challenge some things. And so, we're a little bit vulnerable. So, if, if, if we're going to do this for you, we're going to ask you on good faith to not, to commit to not advancing a project that would jump ahead because they would have relinquished their right to challenge it, could-
Yes. And in fact, I actually have here a letter. So, in connection with, so, one of the requirements that I imposed, and it's in the agreement, is that if, if the board was going to consider this agreement, that they had to have already written the letter to DAED withdrawing their opposition. So, I actually have the letter.
Can you explain to the audience why that letter is important? Because-
Okay.
-we're starting to get into some kind of technical nits and grits that are a little hard to follow.
Okay, so, I'll try to break it down in, into some smaller pieces. Currently, and this follows one of the charts for the other three projects, that was in the PowerPoint presentation, as a function of how the DAED regulations work, that once they submitted their permit application with the zoning board, which they did, the zone, the zoning board had to open the hearing. So, they had a- So they had a hearing, a public hearing, opened the matter. And once the zoning board opened the matter, they had 15 days to notify Alliance whether or not the board assert, was going to assert any safe harbors that might exist under the regulations. The effect of having a safe harbor is that the zoning board could permit the project, or it could impose any conditions it wanted, or it could deny the project, and in that case, the applicant had no appeal rights. It's, it's, they're in there, and the zoning board could kind of say, you know, impose any condition they want, or just say, no thanks, and deny the project. So the zoning board did that. Within the 15 days, a letter was filed, served on the applicant, saying the zoning board of appeals asserts two safe harbors. The town has reached 10%, and in the event it is determined by a court that the town is not at 10%, we have this other safe harbor for one year that expires midnight, May 16th, 2017. Then, under the regulations, the next step is if the applicant disagrees with the town's position, it must file an opposition with DHCD and the zoning board within 15 days. They did that. They filed an opposition to the town's safe harbor positions. That's all sitting at DHCD. DHCD has 30 days, which expires November 14th, to say whether or not the town has any safe harbors, one, both, neither. That is, that is sitting there at DHCD, all right? As part of this discussion, the applicant has, is agreeing, as part of the kind of terms of the agreement, that they will withdraw, so that, the letter they wrote, we're calling the, the opposition. They are agreeing that they are going to withdraw their opposition to the safe harbors. In doing so, the probability is going to be, and I can get into more detail if someone likes later, but the probability here is that DHCD will then issue a determination that says they've withdrawn their opposition, there's no need for us to make a determination, positive, negative, otherwise, because there's no dispute. But what that means is, and we actually have a letter that's signed by Alliance, which said, to the zoning board of appeals, which will be filed with the zoning board of appeals if all of this proceeds. And of course, which, sorry, my pile here. Here it is. It's a couple paragraphs, but the second paragraph's a relevant one. The applicant acknowledges that withdrawing its challenge to the ZBA's assertions of the safe harbors will preclude it from appealing any denial or imposition of uneconomic or unacceptable conditions by the ZBA to the Housing Appeals Committee. So they are waiving any appeal right under, under the regulations.
And just with respect to item number nine, which says the town, you know, the town will not, is, we're saying, we're not going to support any other project that could move ahead. It seems to me that that's kind of, other than 2 Beale Street, and I think we all have a question of whether 2 Beale Street could get permitted by May 17th. It would seem to me that the probability that poof, tomorrow, you know, a project comes in and it could in any way jump ahead, I mean, or that, that a project could, that we would even be in a position to advance a project even if we liked it, I don't, I don't see how we could get that done by May 17th.
Well, what could happen is a developer could come in with another piece of property and, and file, and like Avalon did in the fall of last year, focus on the shipyard and do it. And what this is saying is, you're not going to sign a development agreement with someone else. That's what this is saying. During this period, you signed with them, and you're not going to sign with somebody else to slip in front of them. They're offering you a set of mitigations in, in exchange for your agreement to do this development. So that's what this paragraph means.
So, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
I'll sit.
So how do you slip by someone if you have a separate project, you know, that may take its own course? I mean, Mary's point is a good one, maybe, maybe the paragraph is unnecessary, and Ted has made a point about it, but how are you slipping by somebody other than proposing more than 105 units is what I think you were inferring, that somebody would slip by and hit the safe harbor?
I, I think the main purpose of this paragraph is to ask the board of selectmen to make a choice, 2 Beale Street or 230 Beale Street, not have them both running simultaneously with the hope that 2 Beale Street gets to the finish line first, because it specifically references 2 Beale Street.
So they're, they're basically telling us they don't want to do both projects, which I'm not saying we would, by the way, but they're telling us we shouldn't be doing that if they, we want this deal. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's what the expectation of that provision is, that the, the board's choosing one project over the other project.
So why, why don't they just put that in the, the paragraph specifically to 2 Beale?
Well, you're a lawyer, Paul, you know.
Well, I, I represent the town. I mean, I'm saying is, this is a loose, a loose, maybe unnecessary paragraph that, that, you know, and I don't mean to be picky, but, I mean, I'm not fond of a number of things about this, but the point is that I don't see why we need it in there. That was, from the beginning, when I read it, I had a problem with it.
The, well, what they're asking for, even if it were to be skinny down, is to say, you're not going to support a town project on Beale Street or otherwise that would race us to the finish line and box us out, I mean, in shorthand language.
And it's, it sounds like, as Susan said the other day, that this is a contract, and, you know, there are aspects of this contract that the town has asked for, and there are aspects that Alliance has asked for. So while it may seem, while it may seem like it's not necessary to us, I think what I'm hearing Susan say is that it's important to Alliance, and so-
I just don't like our hands tied unnecessarily, and it seems like this is very broad, that's all.
Right, and I mean, I'm just explaining their position as I understand it, you know, as, I'm not kind of advocating their position, I'm just explaining it as I understand it.
I appreciate that.
Their representative is here, if you have any questions for them about, about it.
Okay.
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
At this point in time, I think what we're going to do is we're going to kind of have a board discussion as to whether or not we should go with the 2 Beale Streets in the middle, or whether we're looking at 230 Beale Street.
Ms. Chairman, respectfully, if people have questions, I would like to hear them before I-
Everybody will get a chance to talk.
I really don't want to say much until I hear what the people in the audience have to say. That's why I'm here primarily for, to hear what the residents have to say.
I just have a quick question.
Yes, Ms. Claypool.
I'm Libby Claypool, 45, Backriver. And I was at the meeting Monday night, and the document that we all got is a one-page document. Now you're referring to a three-page document, and you're referring to paragraphs that, and having a side discussion, really, that we can't participate in because we, none of us have this three-page document that you're all talking about. And this is what you're going to be, you know, five-page, three-page, you're, this is what you're voting on tonight on behalf of all these people that are present here and all the people watching at home, and yet we don't even have an opportunity to, to look at this document that you guys are all discussing. So I just say on behalf of myself, and I would thank the audience, that it's really not fair to be discussing and voting tonight on something when you didn't even make it available to the public, so.
We haven't reached the point where we're electing to take a vote on that particular issue. Right now, we're talking about whether we should pursue 2 Beale Street. You've seen before you the proposals that we have. They're, by necessity or design, dense in nature. They're located on a part of Beale Street that bears no resemblance to the other end of Beale Street where Lincoln Plaza is located. Can we agree on that? Is, is there any real dispute about that? It's also undeveloped area. It's an undeveloped piece of land versus a redevelopment of an existing office building that sits vacant at the end of Beale Street. Can we agree on that? So we've got six proposals.
Paul, could we, I think when those six proposals were put out there, I think people had a chance to talk, but perhaps before our board talks, would, would you consider perhaps inviting comments or questions from the audience on just to the 2 Beale Street? I know you want to kind of contain the conversation-
Sure.
-but that, that might help our discussion.
Sure.
Thank you.
Does anybody want to have a comment on any particular proposal relative to 2 Beale Street? Yes, sir, with the checkerboard shirt. Believe you or Mr. Clark?
Yes, remembering. Hi, I'm Boston Clark, 25 Beale Street. My wife and I moved back to Hingham about four years ago, but before I get labeled as New Hingham, I should say that my, my junior high locker was actually right over there. So in 1985, the, to commemorate the town's 350th anniversary, the, a life history was commissioned, a book I think a lot of people have here, maybe the old, the old townies do, called Not All Has Changed. And there's a great photo in there in 1871 down North Street, probably taken, really sticks out, it's stand, it was probably taken by the Talbets, the old Talbets. And what's remarkable about that is that that view is pretty much unchanged, it's very, very familiar. And I would say that is a testament to the, the painstaking and thoughtful planning that this town has done generation after generation. I would say, looking at some of these RFPs that were, we really only had six days as a town to review, are not a demonstration of that sober kind of, that sober planning. It really feels more like, like a student who just realized they had a term paper due, like, and just pulled an all-nighter. I personally pulled plenty of all-nighters, and I know it never really amounted to anything more than C-minus work. And I feel that that's what I'm looking at right now, and I, even the best, like, the one that we're going with feels like at best a C-minus right now. So I guess-
I'd like to, I'd like to reduce this to the greatest extent possible to an objective assessment.
Yes.
These particular developers, some of whom enjoy, you know, international reputations with respect to development, I realize that this is a compressed review period, which, which speaks to part of the dynamic of the choice for 2 Beale Street generally and what flows from it, but if you wish to continue your statements-
I guess my, my comment really on this would be, it feels very rushed. Is this, is this worth the effort if this is not our best effort? I would just leave it at that.
Mr. Clark, I just, we haven't, we haven't chosen anything. That was-
No, I know, I'm just saying, of the options that I've seen, it was the first time, I'm reacting to those.
Right.
So I would just say, the process felt very rushed, and I objectively would say that that is reflected in what I'm looking at.
I would agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Welcome.
I'm Meg Parker, I live at 13 Adams Court. And I just want to say that these have taken, not in our backyard, to a whole other level. It's literally engulfed our tiny street. You know, it's no secret that Adams Court has have, has had everything put in their backyard, the GPW, the lighting plant, and now these are literally just going to surround us. So that's one thing. My second point is that I have a first grader and a third grader at Plymouth River. One of my children has special education needs, and I can personally tell all of you that the school is maxed out in terms of resources. It's a fact. And I fight every day for my son, and this is not going to be acceptable for the school. It's just not. Like, where is the study of how many families and how many children are going to move into 100 rental units and needing services? Has anyone put a study on that?
Maybe I'd, I'd just speak to two things about that. The first one is that as, as the, the school impact is assessed in the town, the sort of best method that we use is we look at other developments, for example, you know, Avalon at the shipyard, to see how many school-aged students are there. And, you know, that's, that's kind of what we try to do. I would say, just in general, that, you know, one of the things that, that happens with 40B projects is that DHCD, to be very blunt, they don't care about the impact on town services. They don't care about the impact on the schools, they don't care whether we already have a stressed water supply and this is going to put further stress. Those factors can't be considered. And when we talked earlier about the ZBA and their ability to enforce things, they can't put any conditions on a project because of its impact on town services. And again, one of the, one of the things that in, with respect to the 40B regulations, because it can bypass zoning, no matter whether the project's on Beale Street or Viking Lane or somewhere else, you literally, on every one of these projects, end up with about five pounds of sugar in a three-pound bag. Too big, too dense, and because of that increased density, there is a greater concentration on town services. And, and this is something that we're grappling with in, in all of this world, and, again, I would remind us that when, as a town, we achieve an uncontested 10%, it allows us to enforce all of our zoning on all projects, and that reduces the size, and it means that the strain on our systems, for example, our schools, is a little bit lessened. But until we get to that point, our hands are very much tied by the regulations. As, as our town administrator said last night to the League of Women Voters, you know, DHCD is, is focused on creating affordable housing, and that's a very, very worthy mission. What, what they sort of do is, you know, put on blinders about the impact in other places, and I think that's something that communities like Hingham, you know, we all struggle with that.
Let me just follow up to that. Mary makes a good point in one sense, but Ms. Parker, I can't see you up there, but, but I look at it a little differently. I, I think, you know, whether, they may not be the best options, but I still think we have legal options. We've been exercising legal options for a number of years, and the end result has been some of these projects haven't gone through. And the way I look at it, and it's just me, I, I don't feel comfortable voting, and I didn't vote for this, this RFP, which means I wouldn't support the project, by the way, because I thought it was a bad idea for a number of reasons. But I, I wouldn't support a project to try to make something else go away and then ruin the quality of life of people that live in, in the town I represent. I just can't, I will not do it. And I will look for other options, and if something comes, comes up, that's great, but I just want you to know where I'm coming from.
Yes, Ms. Burns.
Laura Burns, 96 Hershey Street. I just want to take two seconds to amplify what selectman power has said, based on my experience, six years serving on the Affordable Housing Trust, and six years serving on the Board of Selectmen, and six years serving on the Advisory Committee as the liaison to the Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Partnership. And that is that, to reaffirm what the gentleman said, what we are looking at here is not Hingham's standard, sober, thoughtful, attention-to-history planning process. The whole point of the 40B law is to short-circuit a town's sober planning process. It is out of our hands. And it will always be out of our hands to take that kind of sober approach that we like to take towards, and, you know, designing things that look like Hingham and that are the right density. We will never have that choice on, on an assured basis until we and DHCD can come to agreement that we are over 10% and we can get out from under all of the law of 40B that allows these developers to pay no attention to our sober planning process. It is rushed because we are under a safe harbor deadline that's running out despite all of our best efforts over the last 15 years to address this problem. And so it is rushed, and it is not sober because the law doesn't allow that. And it is not comfortable. There are no comfortable options. You can't, none of these, none of these projects are appropriate, in my humble opinion, for Hingham. But until we are able to reach 10%, we won't have the ability to, to get control of these projects and make them, make them look like ham. So to my way of thinking, the most important thing is to find a way to reach agreement with DHCD, we're over 10%, and choose a project that will get us there, and then we will be back in control of our planning process, which we are not- of our planning process, which we are not in control of now.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Sneef. Welcome. Good to see you again.
Judy Sneef, 89 North Street. Just very quickly, I am surprised, and I respect all of you. I am surprised that the selectmen would choose to put this kind of density on this property regardless of 40B. 40B is an outside developer choosing to put this kind of density on this property. In this case, the selectmen invited people to put 100 units on this property. And I'm glad that this alternative has come up and that it's shaken this option out of reality. But I think that at, once this is done, we need some reassurance that the selectmen won't propose anything that is so far outside of zoning that it's shocking for the town, no matter what. We do have the legal option, and we could pursue that legal option rather than just shock an area out of, of its historical existence. So, my request is that, as part of this process, there be some reversal or some, I mean, town meeting authorized you to do thing, to, to enter negotiations for an assisted living on this property, but maybe we should go back to square one and just say, okay, whatever happens to this property next has to go to town meeting.
Well, that's the case.
Okay.
So, that's why we're calling a special town meeting on November 17th. This project couldn't go forward without town meeting approval.
Right. But I'm just saying, if you don't have that special town meeting, that there should be some kind of commitment to wiping the slate clean on whatever has been agreed on this property. Given, given the change.
There's a safeguard that the board could only do what town meeting authorized, which is not what is proposed right now.
Which is 20 to 40 housing or, yes. So, I'm saying that even if 230 units or however many go on the other end of Beale Street, I think that the selectmen should no longer entertain such density on this property. Anyway, my two cents. And thank you.
Judy, I just, I just want to comment that, to me, when I voted to put out this RFP, that was not, to me, my support for doing a project. It was, I want to explore all our options. I think 40B, as, as I said the other night, how many of these conversations have we had in Hingham over the last however many years? You know, maybe different people in the room, but there have just been so many of these conversations that, to me, we want to explore every single option and keep them all open as much as possible. I, I don't disagree with you that, that some of these options, and I have great respect for all of the developers who have put things forward. It's, it's a lot of housing in a small area. I don't disagree with that. But just speaking, I think, for me, and I, I think for the rest of the board, I think we're in the process of making up our mind. And I would rather pursue an option and rule it out than, you know, be sitting three years from now when we've got, you know, 800 units over on the Bristol property and saying, gosh, I wonder if maybe, you know, we had tried something on Beale Street, it, you know, we, it could have worked. I think you make a fair point about whatever decision the board and the town make about, over the next couple of weeks, there are going to be some ripple effects. And, and we would, we would potentially have an opportunity to have conversations that could look further into the future than May 17th. And I think one thing that I've heard from residents through this process is, to the extent that we can be proactive where we can, that's something people are looking for.
Judy, just one other thing, follow-up. You probably made the point better than I could have, based on your experience with this, this project that is being considered. Shocking was, was a good word. I, I had problems with it from the beginning. I didn't request it, but I do understand exploring all the options. I understand that. And I, again, I don't have any problem with people looking at options. But we don't have to do these, this, this type of project in this year. We don't have to overload the community on Beale Street with this type of project. This was something that was thrown out there, may have been recommended by, by town administrator to, to consider this option. Because of the 40B issue, I get it, but in the end, we don't have to do it there. Town meeting put it, put its, to consider assisted living project. And if we have to go back to square one on this because it doesn't make sense for the neighborhood, and it doesn't make sense for, for the town, then we should do that. And that's kind of what I'm looking at in this scenario. So, thank you for your comments.
My reaction to that is this. At the time that this all started to germinate within town government, we had just completed the Avalon Experience on Lincoln Street. And as, as that was winding its way through the permit process, Alliance approached the town and indicated that it planned to file a 40B application for a 300-unit multifamily complex at the end of Beale Street. So, that was our reality. That's what we were looking at. There were discussions about that. We were getting close to that 10% figure, in fact, even though we asserted a legal 10% position. So, we were trying to accomplish two things here. One is, we were trying to get some kind of acceptable development that we could put in place on Beale Street because that's where we own land. The town owns land there. It's already been permitted or voted on at town meeting for some kind of affordable living development. It started out as houses, and it's, it's morphed into an assisted living, an affordable assisted living facility. Problematically, though, the, the responses that we got required us to not only give away public land, essentially give away public land, but make a $3 million contribution. And that, quite frankly, that put us in a rock and a hard place because we had a 300-unit submittal down the street, and there was, there was no sign of that changing in any way. So, I think that the majority of the board felt that we explore an option that allowed us to put in some kind of housing, which would give us the increase in affordable unit counts, which would take us to a position that we, in fact, exceeded the 10%. That was controversial. Mr. Gannon didn't agree. I respect that. We voted it. The RFP was issued. We've got some responses. And in response to that position that we took, Alliance modified its position. So, now, the, the conditions on the ground are significantly different. I agree that the proposals that we have had before us on Two Beale Street are stark. North Street is one of our oldest streets in this town. Its configuration remains virtually unchanged. I remember when Adams Court went in, that was jarring, and that's small in comparison to what we have to consider here. Beale Street at that end is problematic. Whether you agree with the proposal or the presentation that was made by Alliance on Monday, you have to acknowledge that Beale Street on one end is different than the other. The infrastructure to handle traffic on one end of the street is different than the other. So, the, this is what we're weighing. This just didn't come out of thin air. Yes, Ms. Burns is absolutely right. We, we are essentially hostage to the 40B development tool until such time that we meet or exceed the 10% figure, in fact, despite the legal position that we've taken previously. We have advanced that repeatedly. We've been denied twice. The denial is essentially a cut and paste of the original denial. I've read both of them. We've been able to work through these projects, however, so that we never get to that final adjudicatory decision. It's that simple. And this is where we find ourselves tonight. We have to make a choice. Do we, do we choose something on Beale Street and continue forging ahead? Let's talk about what that means. We have to have a special town meeting. We have to call that up. We have to get that rolling within weeks' time. Very, very aggressive. Presenting this issue at town meeting will require a two-thirds vote to pass, to change. I, I advanced zoning bylaw changes for years. That's a high hurdle to meet, no matter what. All you need is two or three people to get up and start, you know, complaining and raising issues, and the momentum of the meeting can shift. It's, I've seen it done many times. Let's assume it passes. Let's assume that town meeting says, yep, that's better to do. We will be on an unparalleled permitting schedule to get this kind of project permitted in the time that we have. Everything will have to fall in place, everything, without a hitch. Somebody can't be sick. Every meeting's got to be made. All the experts have to, you know, timely respond with the questions raised during the permitting process. It's very aggressive. But we felt, at the time, when we were confronting a 300-unit project at the end of Beale Street, we were left little choice. Those circumstances have now changed. They've changed substantively. The density of the project's been reduced. There's a, there's a mitigation payment in place. There's infrastructure improvements off-site that are proposed. So, this is our decision. Do we stick with going with Two Beale Street? Or do we abandon that and then debate whether we should enter into the development agreement? Those are the choices we have tonight.
Or not.
Or do nothing. Doing nothing means we stick with the 10% defense. We know where we've gone twice so far on that. But this time, well, there's no guarantee that the developer will stick with the size, the density that is proposed in this development agreement. We also have Talbets across the street. That's 352,000 square feet of empty space. There's almost 1,500 parking spaces. Hingham Mutual is almost 50,000 square feet. By permit, that could increase to 78,000. That was sitting empty for a long time. When the "For Sale" sign went up, I instructed Mr. Alexiadis to contact the principals because maybe that was an opportunity for us. As a town, we've done that before. When Mr. Buffo, who's present in the audience, was a selectman, there was a contact made to Avalon, and when times were flush, which they aren't now because our development revenue was flat, but at the time, we purchased the Avalon site up on Recreation Park Drive. $4 million purchase. It's sitting there. We're paying for that as we speak. Notwithstanding the fact that we don't have a lot of money right now, we nonetheless made a very significant offer to Hingham Mutual. Hingham Mutual is an insurance company that started here in Hingham and still carries the name. And you'd think that the company who bears the name of this town would at least give us the courtesy of a response to a significant seven-figure offer that we made. Because we knew that if that property went into another form, it's zone business, office space. Office space is flat. It's, there's no market for it. I'm sorry. Studied this from every angle. South Hingham Working Group has spent countless hours addressing this issue. It's, it's flat. That's why Talbets is empty. So, sooner or later, somebody was going to come along, and somebody did come along. And Hingham Mutual cashed out. They could have sold it for a lesser price, but they're a business, and they want to make a lot of money. And they did. And now we have a 40B project in front of us. We have a very hard decision to make. The real question is, do we, as a board, think that this is a, is a, a deal that makes sense for us to do under the circumstances that we find ourselves in? There's no good choice. Doing nothing is not an option. I thoroughly agree with Ms. Power on that point. We have to do something. So, the question in my mind remains, do we do both? Do we do Beale Street? Or do we do, or do we do number two Beale Street? Or do we do 230 Beale Street? That is the debate in my mind. I look at undeveloped land versus the redevelopment of existing land. I look at the, the promise of a conservation commi- restriction to further protect the park. I look at the various mitigation payments. I also look at the fact that the developer has continued to work with the town, going through some of these issues, addressing some of these concerns. You may not like it, but there are some developers out there that will stiff-arm you very easily and make life very, very unpleasant. I'm not hearing that's happening. I don't know this particular developer, but it, I take the information I have to make the decision I have to make. I know that I've received many letters from, or emails, as the case may be in today's world, from a lot of the residents of Back River. And it's, it's very difficult for me because I'm sitting here and I'm saying, all right, Hingham Woods, Beale, Beale's Cove, there's 475 units there. The density, in a chart provided to me, courtesy of the Hingham Planning Board, indicated that the density on Beale Street progressively grows as you go towards the Plaza, Lincoln Plaza. It's, it's simply a matter of fact. All you have to do is look. When you drive from Beale Street, from Lincoln Plaza, down to North and Beale and West, it goes from apartment structures, commercial buildings on the other side. Then it, it necks down to these smaller projects, and then it goes to single-family. But everybody who's driven down Beale Street to North Street knows the problem of that intersection. It's, are we, are we going to feed cars into that when we have a choice? And I think we do have a choice. And I've dreaded this meeting because it's a hard choice, and I don't like making hard choices. But I've served this town 23 years, 19 of it on the planning board, and four here as a selectman. And before that, I was a police officer in this town for 11 years. So, I'm fully invested in this place. I don't aspire to any higher office. I'm just trying to do the best I can with what I have. And this is difficult because I see angry faces in the audience and unsympathetic to what I'm saying. But in the end, it's not just the people in this room that I have to answer to. I have to answer to 23,000 men, women, and children that live in this town. And this 40B issue is a nightmare. In October of 2001, four members of the planning board, in its salad days, issued a commentary to the Hingham Journal explaining why we were appealing the decision of the ZBA with respect to the Erickson Project, which is now known as Linden Ponds. Because we would, we were very, very concerned that a condition was missing in the permit. And we went to the SJC. We went all the way up to the SJC with our own money, didn't cost the town a dime on our end. We got a pro bono lawyer to represent us, and we were thrown out on our ear. We have tried everything that we possibly could to deal with this 40B issue in every different way possible. And this, this evening would come eventually because we are now close. We are very close to achieving that. And some of you may say, well, why do you sacrifice my neighborhood for that? Isn't that what you're really saying here? You, you're looking at me and saying, well, why pick my neighborhood? But what is my alternative, ladies and gentlemen? Do I do nothing? Do I do nothing? That's, that's a bad strategy. It won't work. We know, we know from experience what happens when we do nothing. And by being proactive and working with the developers on projects that do work and do make sense, we've been able to slowly but steadily increase our affordable housing stock to the point where we are now. So, that's the backdrop that I have as I sit here tonight and discuss this with my colleagues. I guess I return to the question. Do you have an appetite with respect to Two Beale Street in any form?
I do not.
Okay. Do you have one?
You know, I, I would just say that with, with Two Beale Street, I think we, when, you know, when we issued the RFP, we all kind of said, boy, a whole lot has to happen really quick, and it's all got to go really well. And I have, while I have great confidence in particularly, you know, all of the town departments who I think would, you know, run at this pretty hard and who are pretty good, there are surprises that come up with development. I mean, let's, let's remember what that land kind of used to be. I mean, let's remember what that land kind of used to be. And I think all of the respondents to the RFP put their best foot forward. These are all good faith efforts. But, and I think some of you alluded to it in your letters. You said, gosh, this really isn't very far along. And, you know, these were copies of all the proposals. And as you look through and see different proposals, for me, looking through those proposals said, gosh, there's just so much that has to happen. And so for me, I think that, you know, we've talked about, there's risk, right? There's risk in no matter what we do. To me, there's a very high risk of not being able to execute two Beale Street in the very tight timeframe that we have. And, you know, for that reason, I would look and say, I don't, you know, I don't think we should pursue it. I'm glad we pursued it. I think it created, you know, some other benefit. I think we need to explore everything, but at this point, I would not support accepting any of the RFPs on Beale Street. I don't know if we have to vote that, or...
Yes, you actually do have to vote that if that is...
Certainly.
I'm going to make a motion to reject all proposals received in response to the RFP issued on September 21, 2016.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now comes the fun one. We've got a memorandum of agreement, ladies and gentlemen, with Broadstone Bear Cove, also known as Alliance. We've outlined the salient terms to you. We're looking at a building that will contain no more than 220 units. That's a lot. That is a lot. You're right. And if you look next door, across the street to the shipyard, you'll see a lot more. That area is a dense, densely populated area. It's close to Tri-A. It's close to the commuter boat. It's close to the train. It's close to the bus line. It's got sewerage. It's got a lot of features to it from a development standpoint that would make it attractive if DHCD were to examine this for appeal purposes. So when the decision is made whether to enter into some kind of agreement or, you know, go to the mattresses, or last stand at the Alamo, or however you want to call it, I think part of that requires you to say to yourself, well, what are the odds of us prevailing on this? And I'm looking at that, and you've heard Mr. Alexiades say that under the 40B analysis, the conventional zoning analysis is extremely limited. Now, you're saying to yourself, well, why didn't, why did Alliance come to us and seek to deal? And why can't we just have 105 units or 170 units? I've seen that theme throughout the communications that people have. We have a limit, we have a limit in our ability as to what to exact from a developer when they submit something under this statutory scheme. Nonetheless, the developer made a business decision to negotiate with us, and we have, in my humble opinion, exacted some mitigation to deal with the impact of this particular project. This site has sat empty. It's a 50,000-square-foot office building that is essentially sat empty for years. It's got a skeleton crew. Sooner or later, something was going to come in here. I repeat, we tried to buy this from Hingham Mutual. They didn't even give us the courtesy of a response. We were bidding against ourselves at one point. It was painful, especially where we had some fairly strong activity over at the shipyard at that time. So this is our reality. We've got a developer here. We've got an offer on the table. You good? Okay.
You paused at the right time.
So it's a hard, it's a hard decision that has to be made, but I'm trying to lay it out in pragmatic terms. I really am. That's how I see it.
May I?
Certainly.
Just one quick question, Susan, and then I'll get to my thoughts. On that $50,000 to Bear Cove Park, is that for the upkeep of the inner park itself, right?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I understood because I thought that.
Right.
Okay. That answers my question real quick.
Okay.
So if I may, I want to say this with the utmost sincerity, that whatever decisions any of my colleagues make, I fully respect. You know, there's been points made that it's a very difficult decision. But I will say a number of things. I think that the 220 units, of course, I wasn't happy right away when I saw 220 because it was 200 with the possibility, I guess, of 220, but I guess, and I understand, let's just call it 220. 220 is too many units for that area, in my opinion. I did receive emails, some people from Back River who said, yeah, well, what about us in terms of the value of our properties? And you know, you put that kind of a monstrosity in there, whether, you know, we have options or not. And I think we do have options, by the way, and none of them are guaranteed, but in the legal profession, which we know, a lot of times, options are not guaranteed, you know? So there have been other projects where we have asserted the 10%, and as I think my chairman said, we're asserting it presently in other projects. So I think the fair question to ask is, why isn't Beale Street deserve the same attention or legal defense, in essence, as the other projects? Because since I've been on the board, there's been several, and we've asserted it on several occasions, and I don't think I'm going too far afield to say that, in a lot of these times when we've asserted the defense, there have been times where the matter's been resolved, to resolve to the satisfaction, or at least reasonably so, of all the parties. And why I say that is because that means that there wasn't a 40B development in there. And don't get me wrong, I'm fully in favor of affordable housing, but I don't want to shove it down a part of the town's throat, so to speak. And as someone said the other day, it's like Route 40B down there. And I am very happy that two Beale Street didn't go through because I honestly thought it was a bad idea from the very beginning, and so, and I'm glad that happened. But in terms of 230 Beale Street, I think the developer, if they were, wanted to work with this town, and they seem like decent people, and the attorneys that work for them do a great job, and I told them that myself, I think they should have come down if they really wanted to work with us on this. I don't know how much money they need to make, and I don't know how much money they're going to make, but I know it's going to impact Beale Street and it's going to impact the town in a very negative way. Traffic is going to be horrendous, in my opinion. I don't see any way around it. I know that people are going to do their best to mitigate it, but in the end, I've heard so many stories and talked to so many people about how bad it is anyway, and just, you know, you go that 55-49 scenario at the meeting, to me, it's just too much. And I do understand where we're trying to go, and I wish somehow we could get at that 10% cap. But to say that we don't have options, I think is wrong. I don't think it's correct. I think that we could fight this thing. We're asserting 10% elsewhere, and I don't know what's going to happen down the line. But every time we asserted the 10% and fought it, we had the same questions, the same uncertainty, yet we still asserted the 10%. So we have that option. It's a viable option, and we're publicly asserting it. So to say we don't have that option, I don't think is consistent with what we have said as a town when we're dealing with these matters. So my point is, is that we don't have to settle, in my experience, I will say this, when you go from 300 to 200, you know, maybe, just maybe, there was never that reality that it was going to be 300. I've seen many projects in many places where you start out way up here and you come down and you compromise, which is a good thing, by the way, but it's really where you wanted to be all along. So you really haven't given into the town, and I suggest, not this particular project, maybe, but in my experience, this is how it works. So we don't need 220 units to meet our 10% cap. And maybe the developer will come back to us and say, we really want to do this project and we can still make money, and we'll come back with you with a better number. And that's part of what our legal options are here. Everything's on the table. Compromises happens quite often in legal disputes. So I am advocating not to go forward with this project and to stay the course that we've done on other projects on a consistent basis.
I've had a different experience. I've sat on the planning board for almost 20 years. And frequently, a developer will come in with a project, and let's see, Baker Hill, Conservatory Park, Brandon Woods, multiple small subdivisions throughout town. The developer will come in with a proposed density count within the subdivision. And it's through a process of evaluation and review and the power of local regulations that we're able to speak to that density issue. We can't arbitrarily reduce the density issue, but it's through an analysis of the application that allows us to reduce typically the ultimate density that's permitted. 40B does not give you that tool. I can't keep saying that enough. The kind of oversight and the review authority that the town has is absent with this statutory scheme. And until we obtain that, we are going to be subject to these kind of applications that frankly, once we've passed that 10% figure, are probably not likely to be forthcoming. These 40B projects can exist anywhere. There is a certain rational relation, however, to this particular project, to this particular street. If you look, you have very dense units, I'm not putting my hand in your face. Dense units over across on Lincoln Street in the shipyard. You have Beale's Cove. You have Hingham Woods. You have Chestnut Gardens. And the density tends to thin as you go down the street, but that end of the street has great deal of density. So it's not frankly a big surprise that a project of this nature would be cited there in addition to all the other reasons that I stated. I'm not, I'm not an advocate for Alliance. I'm trying to explain how I see that this isn't a big surprise to me that something like this would be cited there. So, you know, to say we should fight it is good, but, I mean, if you recall what Mr. Alexiades said in the PowerPoint presentation, the last time we waged that battle, we ended up purchasing the site for $4 million. It's on Recreation Park Drive. And that property now sits vacant or empty, doing nothing. And then the second site was SEB on Main Street. And that frankly was such a jarring shock, you know, and it's ironic too, because Mr. Angler was the proponent of that. Mr. Isidore knows Mr. Angler quite well, I would imagine. And Mr. Angler was the proponent for the Erickson Project, and he said, if you approve that, you'll never have another 40B in town. So it was with particular vigor, I would say, that we engaged on that particular site. But in the end, the owner opted to pivot and go to a conventional subdivision with lesser single-family homes. The density was much less. It was consistent with the neighborhood. That wasn't a win. I mean, it was a wear-down, maybe, but it wasn't a win. The issue wasn't adjudicated. It has yet to be adjudicated. And I don't think that there's a particular fondness, well, let's just say, I don't think we're welcome with open arms at DHCD. I really want to get to that 10%, folks. I really do. No clapping. Silence.
I, you know, I think, and, you know, thank you so much for coming tonight, and I know many of you have also written letters, and you've written different letters. And I know we all, we all understand that this is a pretty significant decision, and we very carefully read and considered all the different letters. You know, there were considerations, you know, what if, what if we kept going with two Beale Street? Would that give us more leverage? I mean, there were a lot of different possibilities that people floated, and I, and I gave that all a lot of really careful thought because there were some things in there that, you know, that I hadn't thought about. I think what we're all trying to do here tonight in different ways is to kind of describe the process that we're all going to, to come to whatever conclusion we come to. And, you know, I think that's pretty important, particularly on big decisions. I think we owe you, all of you, more than just who says yes, who says no. I think we want to try to explain why, and I appreciate your patience and your cordiality in listening to that. In terms of my thoughts, and I just want to mention one thing with respect to Recreation Park Drive because it's a, it's an important nuance. When Avalon was proceeding on Recreation Park Drive, the town was pursuing a parcel of land to help with our efforts to sewer South Hingham.
That is true.
That 18-acre site was in the right location. So it was not bought with the explicit purpose of let's block a 40B. It was, we have a need. We think this is important to economic development in South Hingham, and something mutual could happen. Now, we still have that parcel. I think what we're, as we're pursuing efforts in South Hingham, we're realizing that we have other options and maybe more favorable options. But I think that's an important, an important aspect of the conversation. Just to speak to a couple of things, you know, some of you in your letters said, why not continue to pursue two Beale Street? And, you know, could that give the town leverage to perhaps, you know, further work with Broadstone Bear Cove to maybe, you know, ratchet that number down? And, you know, for me, and it informed my vote on two Beale Street, we would have to make a vote to call a special town meeting tonight, and literally, the warrants would have had to get mailed out tomorrow. And once you call a special town meeting, you like can't un-call it. And so the reason that, you know, for those of you that suggested it, the reason that I was uncomfortable doing that was because it felt to me like we were using town meeting, which I know many of us hold in such high regard, as a negotiating tool. And that, that just didn't feel right to me. I think I also concluded that, I think some of the process that we've gone through with two Beale Street has led to the compromise that's occurred already. You know, so I think, I think Broadstone Bear Cove kind of said, you know, they looked at the landscape and said, hey, we got to do something. So I'm not sure that we could go back and say, okay, you know, two Beale Street, you know, what else more can you do? And in fact, tonight, I think our board's decision on two Beale Street has, has put us in a little bit of a position where we now, you know, we don't have, we don't have as much leverage as we did before we took that vote. So let me just tell you a little bit about, about my thought process. If we don't achieve that uncontested 10% by May 17th, what happens is that any project can come in. Broadstone Bear Cove is in the door, but others can come in. And I think people are paying attention to what's going on in Hingham, and so potentially, after May 17th, we could get, we could get another couple projects. And we saw some of the potential projects, they could be pretty big. They could be as large as Broadstone Bear Cove, they could be bigger. The other thing that could, the other thing that could happen on May 17th, again, you know, our safe harbor expires, is there's nothing at this point now that's preventing Broadstone Bear Cove to go back to their original proposal. They could go back and say, you know what? We're going to revise our permit and three, you know, 330 units. So I'm looking at this and saying, as a result of the steps we've taken, the size of the, the size of the Broadstone Bear Cove project has been reduced by a third. the, the size of the Broadstone Bear Cove project has been reduced by a third, by one third. Because think about this, it was a 330 unit, I mean, a 300-unit project. This, I had to write down the term because I always forget it. The insubstantial change means that it could have been bumped up to 330. Okay? Just as of right. So we've taken 330 to 220. And I fully acknowledge that for those of you that live near that, it doesn't feel like it's enough. It still feels too big. And, and, and I'm not, I acknowledge that. And I, I don't, I don't minimize that. But I think what it does say to me is that I don't know how much farther we could successfully push Broadstone Bear Cove. And let me talk for a minute about the litigation piece. You know, we do, we, we saw that there were all those options and there is an option to litigate. A typical, with the litigations we've gone through so far, and remember, we're only like, you know, halfway down the litigation journey, $100,000 to $200,000 just to get out of DHCD. You got to litigate every project until you get a response. Our annual legal budget is $232,000. Okay? Imagine if we have a couple of these going at one time, all of a sudden, we are committing all of our tax dollars to this litigation. And, you know, we've often said that there's risk. There is risk that the ruling could go against Hingham. And if the ruling goes against Hingham, all of the projects we've litigated against have to all go through. And, and when I think about that, I think that that's a, you know, that's a, that's a pretty serious risk to me. I think where we've had success with litigation is with some of the smaller 40B projects. And I think frankly, that some of that has to do with the fact that the smaller developers, they don't necessarily have the financial resources or the time to be able to kind of get tied up with litigation. I think when you're looking at a player like Broadstone Bear Cove or, you know, some of the other developers that bid here, I think they will wait us out. I think they will.
Excuse me, I just wanted to interrupt.
Counselor getting nervous here?
Yeah, yeah, counsel's getting really nervous.
I'm going to change subjects.
So, I mean, it's difficult to talk about legal strategy in a public meeting.
Sorry, yep, yep. Thank you, counsel. So, you know, but, but I'm going to say something else. And that is that this board, so pass boards of selectmen have used different tools. Pass boards of selectmen have used different tools to help the town navigate through this 40B. But up until this board tonight, there wasn't a board that had the opportunity with, to, so, sorry about that. In the past, you've had boards who've been, you know, they've had to work on a project, right? Because we were this far away from our 10% and what they were concentrated on is, what do we do to help this neighborhood and this project? What we have before us tonight is an opportunity to help every future project and every neighborhood. And I understand that that comes with a cost, particularly to those in Back River. But I'm looking and saying, with this project, we can make this, we, we don't have to have this conversation for another 13 years. And we've got time in that 13 years to say, "What are we going to do for 2040?" Now, I don't think any previous board has had that opportunity available to itself. And, and that is very compelling to me. I understand we could litigate. It doesn't feel right to me because it feels like I'm kicking the can down the road and I'm passing this problem on to whoever else is going to have the privilege to sit in this chair. And that, that doesn't feel right. I, I support the development agreement. I would also say that this project, if it advances forward, has, has to go through the ZBA. And, you know, we've talked about the fact that the ZBA's hands are tied. Having said that, I am confident that our ZBA is going to go through a thorough permitting process and they're going to address as many of the various aspects of this project as they can within the law. I realize that that may not be sufficient for, to alleviate all the concerns, but a lot of the questions I heard Monday night, I think the ZBA will have the ability to take up. And so I think that's, that's what I've got to say.
Okay.
One last thing.
Sure.
Thank you. It just as I'm sitting here listening, and I fully understand there's different perspectives. But I, I am cognizant that the SEB, I, I did consider that a victory of sorts because the end result is the quality of life in the neighborhood was preserved, at least it appears to be based on the agreement they've come to. So I, I consider, you don't have to win at a trial to win. Sometimes if you, if you stand up to the folks that are making the proposals and compromises, as I said, come in. But I, I don't want it to be in my mind, this is just me. I don't want it to be that you think that, you know, we don't, we don't want to spend money to, to protect your interests, because I do. I made that pretty clear. We've done that at other projects too. And I'm sure we had, you know, concerns about money then too. But the thing that just jumped out at me is, is I value your quality of life much more than any water company we could spend a million dollars in legal fees for and appeal it after the fact. And believe me, that's not something I wanted to do. The bottom line is, when you're talking about sending that kind of money and buying a water company, protecting your rights, your property rights and your, and your quality of life is worth it to me. That's all I got to say.
Dwight Crowther, 12 Bradley Woods Drive. I think before the board, unfortunately, you've got a rock over here and a hard place over here, obviously. If you don't execute this memorandum, all you're doing is postponing things. May, May of next year, boom, they're in. Or a ton of people are in with their applications. If you execute it, I got to tell you, it bothered me, I live in Bradley Woods, I live in North Hingham. I know what the place is like. I'm not a direct butter to the shipyard, but close enough. I walk there all the time. It bothered me, the million-dollar deal with that. I understand it now. We got something out of the whole mess that was going to go through one way or another. And the only thing we can count on now, we get $1,075,000. We don't delay the inevitable because the inevitable means something's going to go through. And I think you believe in the tooth fairy if you believe it's going down to 100 units or whatever. So I think we need to do it now, take care of it. I think there are certain, certainly mitigations. We complain about traffic and I live in a 100-unit planned development where I live. Yeah, we've got a traffic light on 3A. Maybe the traffic studies will show that we need a traffic light somewhere else on Beale Street to slow down the speeders going through town, coming back and forth to Boston or where they're going. But doing nothing is the worst option right now. Because essentially, this is out of your hands. This is a side deal. Whether you say yes or no, it's going to go through next May. So why not take care of things? And I'm sorry for the people who live right next door. I mean, I, obviously, my neighbors have seen the same thing with the shipyard development. And for the most part, I don't hear any big negative comments about it from my neighbors. I don't ask them, but, you know, in the casual conversation, you don't, you don't hear it. The looks of things, hopefully, architecturally, they'll work something out with the ZBA. So at least it won't look like a big solid brick building.
Thank you.
What else can you do?
Thank you. I'd actually like to thank the selectmen that came before me that have grappled with this very difficult issue. Because I have not enjoyed any of it, and I'm sure they didn't either. But I'd like to remind the residents of this town that we are selected amongst you to serve you. And we approach these issues very seriously, no matter where we are on them. And I don't think that there's, in the, I told my family as I walked out the door tonight, I've served in a volunteer capacity for 23 years. And I don't think I've ever had a meeting as important to me as this because, you know, for all the reasons that we've discussed tonight, this, this is a problem that has plagued our neighborhoods in, in a way that it, it's been almost impossible to grapple with. We have that opportunity tonight. I join Mary Power in supporting this agreement. I think that this represents a substantive step forward, a new chapter. That's not to say that if a developer such as Avalon in the future expresses an interest in developing in this town, they're not welcome. That's simply not so. All I'm saying is the conversation will be a bit different. They're very mature, very pragmatic businessmen. They understand that. We, we will continue to need affordable housing in this town, ladies and gentlemen. We need that mix. It adds to the quality of life that must exist here. It has to. And to suggest that a vote of this nature tonight ends any future affordable housing developments is fantasy. But the nature of the conversation will change. And it will change so that the bargaining position of the town is more formidable in the future than it is tonight. I'd like to thank you all for your... You sure you want to talk right now, Bruce?
Are you going to do a vote?
Yeah, we're going to do a vote. Okay, go ahead.
Bruce Isidore, Sixth Avenue. I have a question. If in fact, you go to the, this project has to go to the ZBA. We're talking about this project as though it's a fait accompli for 220 units. It's going to get approved. I think you're entering into a development agreement where if I ask you the question, "Do you know whether Alliance has the financing to be able to do this project? Do you know whether it has the ability to pay you the million dollars? Do you know what its terms of its contract are with Hingham Mutual as to whether it can go forward with this project to get done by May 16th?" I would submit that a lot of those questions are probably not known. If they are known, I'm happy to hear them.
Did we ask that to Mr. Hastings?
I don't want to get into a discussion because this is not supposed to be personal. But if you want to get into it, if you want to get into a discussion, actually, a lot of those questions were asked. And if I might address that, Mr. Healy, the development agreement for Mr. Hastings at Back River took over six months to negotiate. You're doing a development agreement in about four days.
That's interesting because that was a significantly different set of circumstances, Mr. Isidore.
I can't hear you, but I...
That was a significantly different set of circumstances, but I'm not going to revisit the Back River permit.
I didn't bring it up, Mr. Healy. I'd like to go forward with my presentation. Does somebody have, if nobody can answer that question, then those are really interesting questions that we're about to enter into a deal with somebody that we don't know the answers to about their ability to perform. But another question is, you're not issuing the permit. You're entering into an agreement. You're entering into an agreement. The ZBA is the one that's going to look at this. If the ZBA looks at this and decides that it wants to do 218 units, not 220, does the developer pay the million dollars to the town? So therefore, the ZBA is going to be entering into a review of a permit under a situation where they know, where they know that if they were to try to negotiate with the developer to do less units or other kinds of mitigation factors that resulted in less units or less bedrooms, they, they feel constrained by the fact that they're sitting here with a million dollars being offered to the town. You could take the position right now, let me just go back, at least because I didn't speak when you, when you made the decision. It's always been my view that this negotiation could have gone on for a longer period of time. The other thing that I think was important, it's not that I support, I'm the one that made the comment about Route 40B, so thank you, Mr. Gannon. But it's not that I, it's not that I support a project on either side, but I think it's, on whether it be down at 2 Beale Street or 230 Beale Street. But I think the letters, I've seen the letters that have come from Back River. I think you, people should be very proud of the people at Back River on the letters they sent because not one of those letters was a letter that said, "We won't accept" or were, or were totally opposed to a project down at 2 Beale Street that would have affordable housing and multi-units. That may not be what you're getting with the people around 2 Beale Street. I don't know what you're getting for letters there. But, but this issue at 2 Beale Street, you looked at, you knew when you went to do, to look at the RFP way back in the spring, you knew there was a project by Alliance, 300 units, 250 units, 350 units, whatever the number was, you took that, you didn't know what the traffic studies were at that time, you didn't know what the impacts were at that time. What you decided to do was, let's try to get an RFP for this property at 2 Beale Street so we can make it inside the one-year period and get to the number. That's what the goal was. And when you couldn't get an RFP that met your requirements for assisted living, you went to an RFP to 100 units on 2 Beale Street with it still being your stated goal. And the only thing that has changed now, okay, it's not that they've gone down to 220 units because they went down to 220 units in their last submission to the Board of Appeals. They appeared, Alliance appeared before the Board of Appeals and said, "We're going to be submitting plans for a 220-unit project." I'll take my risk that that's where they're going to go with a 220-unit project. What they came before here was they wanted to avoid the competition of an RFP at 2 Beale Street by paying a million dollars to the town for the purpose of being able to, to go forward with this project and be the only game in town. I don't think there was a risk in going forward with the RFP, but you've already made that decision. And I should mention that I recognize in the RFP process, I was listed as an attorney on one of the projects, it was not one of the projects that was selected. And you can trust me that I would have, I would have walked out from that project and not been the attorney at, on any request. That's not the reason why I'm doing this. And they're not the selected project in any event. And I'm still standing up here. At least they're not the recommended project. The, the issue right now, since you've already made the RFP vote, in my view, there's a question, and I'll just, not going to go into a discussion unless Mr. Healy would like to hear this or one of the board members, where I think there's a question of the legality of this agreement, of this development agreement where you were all set to go forward with an RFP. Can't be more transparent about how aggressive you wanted to go forward with an RFP to reach 105 units in the town, not with the Alliance project at 230 Beale Street. And with the offer of a million dollars, essentially an offer of a million dollars because, and now some other mitigation, with an offer of a million dollars, it's influenced your vote. That's my view on this, okay? But right now, with respect to the development agreement itself, if in fact, the development agreement is signed and we don't have, the ZBA does not have the flexibility at the end of the day with the influence that's coming from this board and a million dollars to the town, I think that's a problem. I think allowing, not going forward with this development agreement, I'm willing as a resident of Back River to take that risk, okay? And to, as to what that project will be. But once you sign this development agreement, we put ourselves in a situation where the ZBA loses a fair amount in negotiation. And I just think we should not have that occur and take that away from them. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Mullen? How are you, Mr. Mullen?
Hey, good evening, Chairman. How are you all? Bruce Mullen, 39 Back River Road. Just a clarifying question. This is sure is not going to affect the proceedings, but I just wanted to pick up on a comment Mr. Gammon made. If you sign the development agreement today, is the Board of Select or the Town of Hingham allowed to assert the 10% Linden Pond's defense?
Yes, the 10... The zoning board is not withdrawing its assertion. It is not required to under the agreement. There's an acknowledgement by Alliance that the board is not withdrawing it and they are, and so it is still there. And that's why I read the provision I read earlier.
So just so I can understand, in the past, who has, which has been the legal entity that asserts the Linden Pond's defense?
The zoning board of appeals.
As a committee of the Town of Hingham?
Under the regulations, the zoning board as the only permitting board authorized to hear 40B applications is the one that's required by the regulations to make the assertion. hear 40B applications is the one that's required by the regulations to make the assertion if it chooses to.
So going, the, for the Board of Selectmen to enter into this development agreement, the ZBA can still take that assertion that the Linden Ponds qualification, that 10%, and the ZBA, if they elected to go to litigation, you signing this agreement does not preclude the ZBA from entering into litigation against Alliance? Have I got that correct?
I'll read the language to you.
Because the-
Yeah, I'll read it to you. The parties acknowledge that although certain terms and provisions of this agreement are conditioned upon actions or inactions on the part of the ZBA pursuant to Chapter 40B, the ZBA is the sole local board authorized to hear and decide applications for comprehensive permits, and the ZBA, excuse me, acts independently in doing so. The ZBA is not a party to this agreement, and no provision of this agreement shall be construed as a directive to or binding upon the ZBA in connection with its review and decision of the application. Rather, this agreement sets forth terms that shall be determined to apply only if and when the ZBA has independently acted with respect to Alliance's application. The ZBA acts independently. No member of the ZBA has been involved at all in any conversation. None of them have seen this agreement. They're going to do their job, and, you know, they're going to, when they make their decisions, they're the ones who are the party to all the litigations. They understand all of the litigation risks. They understand the consequences of their decisions, action or inaction, and I think the town has always had a great deal of faith in the expertise of the zoning board, and I believe that would remain the same here.
So to clarify, if the ZBA came to decision that they, for whatever reason, wanted to litigate the Linden Ponds defense against Alliance and take it to court, where would they, where would the ZBA get that funding from?
The, well, the zoning board, the-
Get it from the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen-
From you guys who've signed the agreement that you're not going to support-
Excuse me, the Board of Selectmen has never, has never denied counsel to any board.
So, but just on that point, does this, you signing this agreement, does this not preclude you from providing funds to ZBA? Because you've just, this agreement says that you will support the Alliance development.
We've already allocated funds to the ZBA to defend this case as they see fit. The board's done that, the board did that four months ago, I believe.
Right, and just so you understand, let's, for the sake of argument, say the zoning board chose to deny this project, this agreement goes away anyway. So it's not, they're no longer bound by it, and neither is Alliance. So if this project was to be denied by the zoning board of appeals, it's as if none of this happened, and you're just back to the safe harbor defense.
Sorry, just clarify that again. If the ZBA denies the Alliance project, this agreement becomes now an void, and you don't get the million dollars.
That's right. Right, and then, and so, and then the board is not obligated to support it or not oppose it anymore. It goes back to as if this never happened. So the zoning board is going to make the decision, the zoning board feels is appropriate, and whatever happens from there, happens from there. This is, this is an agreement, if they get a 220-unit project, this kicks in.
But until, until such time as that 220 project stops, the Board of Selectmen, in return for this million dollars, sort of extraneous, it's got nothing to do with the actual development itself, this million dollars, it's supposed to go for schooling or, that is, that, until, you've got to support, the Board of Selectmen have got to support and not take any action against that development until such time as the ZBA rejects the proposal. It would have to come to an end. You would have to exhibit support right up until the ZBA actually rejected the proposal.
Yes.
Does that, I understand the sequence of events?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just want to, you know, a couple of the speakers have, have referred to this million dollars, and just speaking for myself, if I look at the reasons why I am supporting this development agreement, the major reason that is compelling to me is that it puts the town in, it has the potential to put the town in position where it has met an uncontested 10% for 13 years. The financial contribution of all of the factors for me was one of the least important. We've had people over the years tell us, they've noticed that in other communities, you often have development agreements and towns receive some concessions, and over the years, some of us on boards have been asked by citizens, you know, "Hingham should do that." But I would say that the most compelling thing for me is the benefit to the entire town with respect to the 10%.
Yes, Mr. Snyder. How are you tonight?
Mark Snyder, 23 Back River Road. So, they initially came in with 300 and some odd unit proposal. We only need 100, 105 units to meet our requirement. They dropped from the 300 and some odd down to 220. The optics to me would suggest that you've got an opportunity to negotiate further. And I don't understand, I haven't heard whether you have taken this opportunity. Now, you might say, it makes it economically infeasible if you push them harder. I'm not so sure. These guys want to be in this town. When I look at the 2 Beale proposals, they offered virtually twice as much, in some cases, you know, like what, $5 million more than some of the other bidders. They want to be in this town. They want to be in this town so badly, they're willing to hand you a million dollars. I think that there's opportunity to negotiate further, and I'd like to understand what negotiation has taken place or what negotiation could take place to improve this lot. The other thing that concerns me is the million dollars goes to the town, yet we, as the neighbors, are the ones that are harmed the most. Why not tell them to take that million dollars and use it to improve what they're doing there, to buffer better against the neighbors, to put something that doesn't expose Lynch Field to it, to improve the roads in that area? Why not tell them to use that money to minimize or reduce the impact on us, the most harmed individuals in this?
Two questions.
I'm just going to answer the second question with respect of the impacts on, can everyone hear me? I don't, okay, all right, there it goes. The impacts that are directly affected, the roads, the butters, the buffering, all of that is what the zoning board does. This agreement provides for various mitigation compensation to the town, which the zoning board would have had no right to require. So all of those other items, that was the second half of the question, will be addressed at the zoning board level.
To answer the first part, we, our inability to negotiate any further is because, in my opinion, Hingham Mutual's resistance to reduce the selling price to Alliance. That's been the problem here from day one. That's why Hingham Mutual did not even bother picking up the phone and returning our phone call when the board made them an offer in excess of $5 million, when, when the brokers at the time told us that was the offer that would succeed the price. So this is being driven by, like, almost all 40Bs, by the property owner who wants to realize significantly more money than the property is worth without the 40B litigation.
You said why you can't negotiate. My question is, did you-
We, we did negotiate. We did, at length.
Yes.
For months.
All right, we have time for one more question.
Oh, you're talking about, he's, I'm sorry. He's talking about the negotiations with Hingham Mutual. The question was about your negotiations with Alliance. That was a more recent discussion.
The negotiations were fruitless up until the point in time the Board of Selectmen put a RFP on the street for 2 Beale Street.
I'm not asking about that. I'm asking about negotiations-
Easy, Mr. Snyder.
With Alliance. Well, no, you might answer my question.
We have. We've been negotiating with Alliance for the past, well, actually, for the past several months, but nothing of merit until the board took action on, with respect to 2 Beale Street, and then surprisingly, there was conversations.
Ted, I think what he's saying is, why didn't we go beyond the negotiation? When this all started to really get hot and we were, made a proposal at the 200, which became 220, so why don't we negotiate with them and try to get them down off of the number so it would mitigate-
That's what we've been doing for the last week.
Well, can I, can I just be honest with you? Nobody in the third floor has told me that you guys tried to get down from that number. And that's important for me to know.
Well, that would be helpful to you if you came into the office and talked to us, but we don't hear from you.
I talked to Tom Mayo. Ted, just because you want to take a shot at me, I talked to Tom Mayo and asked him about it, and just, you understand by that comment where that comes from. He did not do that, as far as I'm concerned.
Ladies and gentlemen, negotiating in this context is very difficult. There's a lot of pressure. We have been engaged, to answer your question directly, Mr. Snyder, in negotiations with Alliance through its authorized representatives, and I'd like to think that we got as much as they were possibly willing to give in the timeframe that we had to negotiate. We had to make the decision tonight whether or not to pursue the 2 Beale Street option. We've made that decision. So at this point, we, we're going forward, after we discussed this, gave everybody an opportunity to speak. I know that you're not happy about this, sir.
No, officer, that-
Sure.
It's the optics. Please understand that. We knew that they've been talking about 220 units for weeks, so it doesn't seem like there was, other than them giving the town a million dollars, it doesn't seem like there was any further mitigation. I'm just telling you the optics to me.
I respectfully disagree, and here's why. Because you look over there now, you see a 50,000-square-foot building. Essentially, this is a redevelopment of a site. It, it is.
It's a, excuse me, it's not a redevelopment. Redevelopment would be consistent with the existing code. It's a zoning change and a development.
I suppose in that sense, and that's the problem with the 40B process, that we have to continue to grapple with. In that sense, you're right, but the 40B process relieves them of complying with the zoning bylaw. So we're in a pickle there. We really are. What we've done, though, is we've capped what could be built there in the future. We've got a figure agreed to with certainty that's binding on anybody that owns that property, both now and in the future.
I understand. I do take exception with the attorney, her comment about the fact that the zoning board has, is the party to negotiate local impact. I think you folks, part of this agreement, you could say, "Fine, give us a million dollars, cut it back, and we want you to do something to mitigate impact."
I think when you attend those meetings, you're going to see perhaps one of the best zoning boards in the state in action. Those people are pros, and they've been doing 40Bs now for a while. So with all due respect, I respectfully disagree with you on that. They're extremely competent and thorough individuals dedicated to serving the town and watching out for its best interests.
I appreciate that.
But I just want to spin this out, and they know the context of the 40B review, and they're very, very capable of getting the kind of protections that they're able to get. They're dealing with an applicant who's ably represented, understands the dynamics of the process. So my suggestion to you, sir, is go to the meeting and voice the kind of concerns that you've expressed about buffers. I know that that's going to be an issue of acute interest to the neighbors. It always is. I don't care if it's Back River or Brandon Woods or Baker Hill, whatever. I mean, that's always an issue that the neighbors have.
I think you're right, that that is a proper venue for us to voice those concerns.
Absolutely.
And we will do that. I'm just concerned today about losing some potential leverage that I perceive that perhaps you may have. Obviously, I've been in the room with you-
We totally respect that.
That's why I'm raising these points.
But I would like to think that we have tried everything we could to get to the place we're at.
Mr. Snyder, the board, I was just kind of looking at calendar and asking about dates, so I'm, I don't, I don't have all the dates in front of me, but it was, I believe, at the Selectmen's meeting on September 15th that we voted to issue an RFP for Beale Street. If my memory serves me right, the Alliance, the Broadstone Bear Cove reduction, and counsel's telling me that it hasn't even been filed yet, but that those developments occurred after September 15th. We voted to issue the RFP on the 15th. The RFP was issued on September 21st, as we said the bids were due. So I think, you know, there are different ways to look at it, and certainly, everyone's entitled to their opinion, but I think if we look back at the dates, we will see that the change in the size of the development occurred after a public meeting when the Selectmen voted to issue an RFP on Beale Street.
No, I appreciate, and I understand that. I wasn't trying to tie the 220 reduction to the RFP. I was tying it to, saying that it occurred before this week. It's occurred sometime in the past, and I wasn't tying it to the RFP, but I do think that, I'm just, the optics to me, that I think, I would hope that you've taken the opportunity to push as hard as you possibly can. Thank you.
I can assure you, we have. Yes. I think I'd like to do a vote at this point. I'll entertain a motion to enter into and execute the memorandum of agreement with Broadstone Bear Cove Alliance LLC related to the development of 230 Beale Street.
So moved?
Second, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Nope.
Okay. It passes. Thank you, everyone. Okay, moving on. Thank you. Yeah, it won't be too much longer. Okay. Let's just, let's just let the crowd clear a little bit.
I see Ken Corson in the back.
Yes, I'm, I'm down. Where is Ken?
Thank you. We have mooring permits, and we have a liquor license.
Yeah. Is the habbymaster in the room?
He is.
Can you get him down here? Do we have a speaker? Is there a microphone?
I wish I did. I don't see him. There he is.
Join us at the table, please.
Pardon my casual attire. Welcome.
It's quite all right.
That's fine. Welcome.
It's quite all right. All right, ladies, we're still in a meeting. Believe it or not. All right, Ken, what do we have? I'm going to, I'm going to call the sergeant-at-arms to clear the room if you don't, thanks. We're going?
Who's the sergeant-at-arms?
Tommy. Can you not get in here? Who didn't help him?
Took a shot.
Oh, come on. Seriously.
What about him?
Ah, come on.
It's only me. Tell him the same thing. Barney, tell me that he's negotiating.
Ted, would you like?
I talked to him, Barney. All you have to do is have a courtesy.
Huh? Thank you? No, I'm going to look on Ted's copy.
All right, fair enough. I'll tell him. Okay, all right. We're back.
Welcome.
Thank you, Ken. We have, oh, you ladies are killing me. They're killing me. You got to try harder there, Gee.
Police.
Call the chief down.
I'm from Quincy, come on.
Yeah, Quincy. That explains it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay. All right. Let's, let's continue our discussion with respect to the proposed general mooring fee increases. You provided us with a chart which would indicate what your, is that, hello?
Carol, could you come up a little further? They shut the mics off.
We're doing the-
Turn it back on?
Definitely got to spruce up the budget. My lawyer just walked in the room, so be careful.
All right, the mics are back on.
All right, we're discussing the mooring fee increases with the habbymaster, and you've given us a sheet with, with what you proposed. you've given us a sheet with, with what you proposed. Can you give us an explanation of what's involved here, where we are, where, where we're going?
Sure. So, after the initial presentation a couple of weeks ago, and hearing what you had to say, your initial comments, we went back to the, went back and looked at the different fees, and we're currently, for basic moorings, we're at $7 a foot, and we propose a 50-cent increase over the next four years, which by 2020 will bring us up to $9 per foot. One of the great things about this is it gives people the ability to see what it's going to be over the next couple of years, so they know what the increases are, and they can plan accordingly. We also put a couple of, a lot of people, you know, we talk $7 a foot, but what does that actually mean? So, we actually put some comparables there for you to look at, you know, for a 20-foot boat, a 25-foot boat, and a 30-foot boat. Put it in context of what it would actually cost a person for that calendar year, based upon the recommended fee for that year. So, those are the, the moorings throughout the harbor. The next, the next batch of fees that we get into are for World's End. Those are a little bit different. We don't actually base the, the fee off of per-foot structure. It's done for the mooring for the entire year. The fee of 250 was established over 20 years ago. In 2010 or '11, it was increased to 350. These are unique moorings. They're not a mooring that someone keeps their boat on for the entire summer. It's more of a transient-type mooring, where there's clubs, organizations, yacht clubs, marinas that have the moorings. Some of them are private moorings, that they share with their friends, and these people take their boats there, and they go there for the weekend, they go there for an overnight. So, they're not the, the mooring where someone stores their boat, but it's more of a luxury-type mooring, where you go there, you spend time, you bring your friends. So, because of the different use of the mooring, we have a different fee structure, and we feel that you could have a, potentially, a little bit of a larger fee, because they're shared, like I said, amongst clubs and marinas, the majority of them. So, you'll see that that's why that has a little bit of a different fee structure to it. You also mentioned that to try to be creative and think about some other ways of increasing revenues, and one of those would be to increase the transient mooring in World's End. So, there's 41 moorings in World's End, four of them are transient rentals, and they don't get the $350 fee that we currently have. It's done per boat, per rental, per day. So, we could potentially increase that a little bit, maybe up to $50 per boat per day.
I would just tell my colleagues, as somebody who, you know, goes places on the weekend, $50, you know, when I think of what it costs to pick up a mooring in, in Situate, in Marblehead, you know, different places, this is still on the low end of the scale.
Well, it's good, and you're better to pump it up.
You know, and then, you know, you go through, you know, I, I think you've got it at 35, so you, I think Ken's got a...
I pushed Ken up a little higher. He wouldn't go any higher on me.
I think, I think that...
Thank you, Ken. I don't, I don't want to go up, but I think that's pretty reasonable.
I think it's, I think that it would still...
I thought the same thing you thought, Mary.
It would still, it would still make it attractive as a destination, because that mooring fee relative to other places is still on the low end.
And I noticed that. I appreciate you being...
I'm going to defer to you. I think that it should be more, but you know what? I'm not a boater, so I don't know what...
So, to give you a little bit of an idea, right now, we have, like I said, we have four moorings in there. They're rented out essentially every weekend day of the summer. Those, each of those moorings bring in roughly about $3,000 of mooring rentals.
Per year?
Per year, exactly. So, there is a significant draw to that area. You could potentially go higher, and you probably would not lose people, you know, you probably would still have people coming there. So, you know, if you'd like to go higher, you could potentially say, "Well, let's go to 50 and go a little bit higher."
I, I don't want to go higher, so I think that...
I'm just going to have them negotiate from now on.
I would also say, you know, these...
Just trying not to price people out, trying to be very cognizant.
And, and these are people who are going to come in, and, you know, they might go down to the square, they might...
Probably shouldn't say anything.
Invest money in our economy.
Well, I didn't push really hard on this area, because it's $3,000 on $200,000. The bulk of this conversation should be about what you're doing with 98% of the revenue that you collect in this area. So, if you use the 90-10 rule, it's, you know, focus on that. That's, that's what you're trying to do, to generate the revenue to support a debt issuance that could help fix the harbor issues that you've identified, some $12 million of harbor repairs.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt the proposed general mooring fee increases.
So moved.
Second. All those favor? Aye. Thank you so much for coming in.
Ken, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day all-alcoholic beverages license at South Elementary School PTO, for the South Elementary School PTO Fall fundraiser to be held at the Hingham Community Center on Saturday, November 5th, 2016, from 7:00 PM to midnight.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll entertain a motion to close Town Hall on Friday, November 25th, 2016. Employees do not need to use accrued personal vacation at compensatory time.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, for the people. All right. Selectmen reports. Mr. Mayo?
I have nothing.
Mr. Alexiades?
You know, we've been a little focused on this meeting this week, so nothing to report.
I, I just actually want to thank Ted. He was the guest of the League of Women Voters last night at, at their meeting. He was, he was bombarded with really great questions from very engaged, very intelligent league members. It was a great discussion on a lot of topics, and I appreciate that you took the time to do that, and I think it helps the league continue to do great work in the community.
My pleasure. Thanks for the invitation.
Well, you're good. I'd like to thank Ted Alexiades, Tom Mayo, staff, Real Estate Council, for the work that was done on the Beale Street issue, no matter what the outcome. That was an extraordinarily challenging exercise for all of us to engage in, and I, I thought this meeting went as well as it could have. In terms of presentation, the issues were clear, and I truly appreciate that. I really do. I do want to end the meeting on a light note. I went to the dump earlier this week. You guys call it the transfer station, sorry, but I known it as the dump, and somehow or other, I dropped my phone, which is like, oh, no! And I, I came right back, and some nice lady found it and turned it in, so my phone was intact, and some other nice lady called the highway department to tell them that my sticker on my card expired. I had to go down and get a new sticker, and I still owe 25 bucks. So, life goes on. I just want to thank everybody tonight, and thank the audience, for you at home for listening. I hope you found this, this meeting helpful. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
You're good.